Can I just start the video here if you need to rekindle?
Okay.
We good?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Next one.
Okay, is everyone able to hear me all right? All right. Perfect. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, March 22nd, and I am calling this meeting to order. Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per Board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings, and moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held tonight after the presentation for each agenda item for which a speaker has signed up before the Board's discussion. As we begin our work this evening, I ask that we remember that OCS educates our students on the traditional land of the Okanichi Band of the Suponi Nation. I want to hold close to us the eight people who were murdered in Atlanta last week, six of the victims being women of Asian descent. Orange County Schools stands friendly against white terrorism and extends solidarity to members of our Asian, Asian-American, and Pacific Islander communities. I want to encourage teachers to discuss these incidents of racial terror with their students and families as well. Those needing additional resources can find them in the email Dr. Felder sent last week or by reaching out to me directly. I'd also like to recognize that World Autism Day was celebrated yesterday. Our autistic and neurodiverse students are a wonderful asset that makes Orange County Schools' community stronger and more wonderful place to learn and be. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you for that. Next item on our agenda is recognitions. Dr. Felder?
Good evening Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, to all of our board members, our students, staff, and families. Tonight, we have a number of recognitions. Recognizations improve engagement, productivity, and retention. And so, we are thrilled to, next slide please, to begin tonight's recognitions by recognizing Arts in Our Schools Month. And so, throughout the month of March, Orange County Schools has, along with the Department of Public Instruction, been celebrating Arts in Our Schools Month. We want to let you know that the celebration continues. Why are we celebrating the arts? Why are the arts important in our students' education? Well, the research is very clear, and best practice shows that arts experiences boost critical thinking. The arts provide challenges for learners at all levels. The arts provide an education, arts education connects students with their own culture as well as with the wider world. And a study in 2010 found that greater arts education led to fewer disciplinary infractions, higher attendance, higher graduation rates, and higher test scores. So, in Orange County Schools, we value, appreciate, promote, and celebrate the arts this month and every month. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Shannon Braxton, Director of the Arts and CTE, to bring a few words as well. Ms. Braxton?
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing us to have this time to celebrate the art with A-R-T being the focus with cultural arts. A little play on words there. We have arts education at every tier in Orange County Schools. In elementary school, we have music and visual arts. At the middle school, we have chorus, band, and visual arts. And at the high school, we have chorus, band, visual arts, and theater. With over thirty, with thirty-two cultural arts teachers, students in Orange County Schools have the opportunity through arts education to be innovative and to use their creativity to engage and retain and prepare for their future. And so, I just wanted to take a minute to just recognize those thirty-two cultural arts teachers and tell you that we are highlighting them every single day on our Twitter account and our Instagram account, Orange County Schools Cultural Arts. And the district has been recognizing students and programs in, on their district website. So, please make sure you tune into those social media channels and see the good work that's going on around the district.
Thank you so much, Ms. Braxton. All right. So, in addition to celebrating the arts, as you may be aware, March 8th through 12th was National School Breakfast Week. And so, in Orange County Schools, our child nutrition teams from several schools use this year's theme of Score Big with School Breakfast to decorate a poster featuring their school's cafeteria crew and all the wonderful benefits of scoring big with a school breakfast every day. I will tell you, the competition was fierce. And if you can start scrolling through the posters, so you can see what I mean. So, cabinet members voted on the best poster design, and it was tough. I wanted to vote for them all, but I was told I couldn't. And so, the winners are, first place is poster number three, which is CW Stamford. So, congratulations to them. Second place is poster number four, Central Elementary School. So, congratulations to them. Third place is poster number one from Cameron Park Elementary School. Congratulations to Cameron Park. We want to say thank you to all who participated in celebrating School Breakfast Week. You can see the teams really poured their heart and soul into it. Good nutrition is essential and is linked to classroom performance. We know that. And so, we are thankful that we can serve the families of Orange County Schools in this way. So, congratulations to all of our teams. So, next, but certainly not least, the education lottery created by the North Carolina School Heroes Program to showcase the positive impacts of teachers, principals, and other school workers have in public schools every day. Parents, teachers, and community members submitted more than 4,900 nominations. I'll say that again. Four thousand nine hundred nominations, more than that, of individuals making a difference in their schools. That is incredible. Both the school hero and their school received a $10,000 reward. So, Coach Mulligan's gym, in her gym, students learn to work together and develop critical thinking skills, all while incorporating math, literacy, and social skills. Coach Mulligan is known to sacrifice her planning period to help other teachers in their classrooms. She answers calls from the school secretary. She connects with the families at the school. She has spearheaded efforts to gather large collections of donated clothing, like jackets in the winter, and housing goods, like mattresses for families without beds. Wow, to help them, those in need. She has even helped families find housing and transportation. So, clearly, she is worthy of this recognition. So, for her, it's not just about delivering her physical education curriculum, and that's clear, said Ms. Lynn Brown, who is the principal of the school. She's focused on the whole child, including their social, emotional needs too. You don't find that in all teachers. So, Coach McMullin inspires everyone around her because she loves what she does. And she's been doing it for over twenty years and has no plans to stop anytime soon. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Brown, Principal at Pathways Elementary School.
Good evening Board Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, board members, Dr. Felder, Superintendent, Orange County staff and parents. And Dr. Felder, you hit many of the highlights that I wanted to say, because Coach McMullin is not your average physical education teacher. And I never know what I'm going to see when I go in that gym, but I know it's going to be, the children are going to be having fun, they're going to learn, and they are going to be doing something very creative. And Coach has, she is one of the teachers at our building that the parents, staff, and students will never forget. They come back year after year and to visit her. And our students and families know that they can go to her for any and everything that they need, not just physical education, because her passion, her true passion, is helping others. And Dr. Felder mentioned a lot that I would highlight as well. And as the winner, she received $10,000, and so did our school, which will also go to helping our students and staff. And I am just so proud to have Coach McMullin as part of our star team, because she is truly a North Carolina school hero. And I just thank her, and I'm proud to be her principal. Thank you.
Absolutely awesome. Let's give her a round of applause. And thank you, Ms. Brown. Congratulations again, Coach McMullin. We are proud to have you on our team. So, last but certainly not least, tonight, we want to recognize our Equity Warrior for March. Again, what is an Equity Warrior? Well, an Equity Warrior is a person who, regardless of their role in a school or district, passionately leads and embraces the mission of high levels of achievement, not for some students, but for all students, regardless of race, social class, ethnicity, language, culture, disability, et cetera. And so, tonight, Dr. Deana Keeling, our Chief Equity Officer, will recognize this month's Equity Warrior. Dr. Keeling?
Good evening, everyone. This month's Equity Warrior was referred by Principal Jamie Bell Williams. Perhaps the hardest parts of becoming racially and culturally competent is doing the self-work to critically examine your own biases and misconceptions about people from a different race or culture, to step out of the world where you are the majority and interact with those who are of a different race or culture than your own, to open yourself up to the possibility that everything you learned about your race and culture and about the race and cultures of others is inaccurate. That's no easy task, especially when it's all too easy to not have to do it. Mrs. Kagle grew up in what she refers to as a white supremacist bubble. She found herself at a college where the environment wasn't much different racially than it was back home for her. It would have been easy for Mrs. Kagle to continue that pattern, to continue to seek out experiences and environments where she felt comfortable, where everyone looked like her and affirmed her mindset, even if that mindset brought harm to others. But she didn't. Instead, Mrs. Kagle makes an intentional effort to increase her personal awareness about race and equity. She seeks out multiple perspectives and listens to those whose experiences are different from her own. So often, people want a quick fix to equity or for someone to give them a strategy or a tool to simply implement. But Mrs. Kagle demonstrates that you being racially and culturally competent is the tool, and doing the continual work of identifying and dismantling your own biased beliefs and mindsets is the strategy. And that is why Alexis Kagle is the March Equity Warrior. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Keeling. That concludes recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Felder and Dr. Keeling. Um, so, the next item on our agenda is agenda adoption. Dr. Felder has requested that the conversation about strategic planning be postponed until our first regularly scheduled meeting of April. And so, I wonder if I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the removal of that item?
Still moved.
Second?
Have a motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
About yes? Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Our amended agenda has been adopted. The next item is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent?
No move.
Second?
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Stevens. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
I say yes, but I wanted to comment that I just wanted to highlight all of the donations that we continuously get, including the mayor. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Our consent agenda has unanimously passed. The first item on our agenda is Senate Bill 220 and Plan A for elementary schools.
So, I believe Ms. Dubuson is going to provide an update. Ms. Dubuson? Mr. Jones, is Ms. Dubuson a panelist?
I apologize. There I am.
No worries. Surprise!
I was just muted, so I'll start over. So, I am going to provide you an update on Senate Bill 220, which did pass and was signed by the governor. I know that you have seen it, but just to give you a summary as you're looking towards your plans for the upcoming weeks. What the Senate bill says is that all schools must reopen under Plan A for elementary K through five. And I'll talk a little bit about Plan A or Plan B in a second. That districts must provide in-person instruction for grades six through twelve that can be under either Plan A or Plan B. Districts who choose Plan A for those grades, there's some requirements about working with the ABC Collaborative to provide them data and submitting your plan to DHHS, which is just a, you know, they want a broad report of who's going back when. It's not a approval process. Regardless of your choice for six through twelve, the legislation requires that districts offer any student with an IEP or a 504 at any age, the option of instruction under Plan A requires that districts follow the Strong Schools Toolkit as it existed on March 4th. And so, you know, I've used the terms Plan A or Plan B. These are not defined in the legislation. So, for that, we look to the Strong Schools Toolkit as it was on March 4th, which defines Plan A and Plan B in terms of the public health protocols that are involved. So, it's not about a particular schedule or number of days, but which plan of social distancing are you following essentially? Plan B means that, means limiting the number of students and adults in your classroom and your buildings in order to maintain six feet of distance at all times, including between your desks in the classroom, and also to keep no more than one child per seat on the bus. Plan A is not doing that, allowing two children per seat on the bus and allowing desks to be closer to that, to each other than six feet in the classroom. Plan A does include the rest of the requirements in the toolkit. So, I don't want to, there to be this suggestion that Plan A means no more social distancing, because there are still lots of requirements, including that you mark six feet apart in congregated areas like hallways or in line, places where kids have to wait in line, and still maintaining six feet distance for your staff, so not, you know, holding crowded conference rooms or lounges. Still has special rules for food distribution, and still requires that large activities, group activities like assemblies or performances be discontinued, you know, for the duration of Plan A. So, there are still plenty of social distancing requirements under Plan A, but it, essentially, you can have your desks closer together than six feet in the classroom, and you can have more than one child per bus seat. The toolkit leaves pretty wide discretion to districts to determine what kind of schedules or bell schedules rotations are necessary to implement these requirements. And then, we have another guidance document that is the guidance to implement the toolkit, which is a document called Lighting Our Way that's put out by DPI. And that was updated by the State Board of Education last week. And of note in those updates is the toolkit, I mean, I'm sorry, the Lighting Our Way defines Plan A as at least four days per week of in-person instruction where you have all of your students present. So, for the first time, sort of gets into a operationalizing of what Plan A is. And also, the State Board, as part of that document, gives guidance that schools could set a deadline of April 1st by which people would be required to choose in-person or virtual. And that's important, because one of the questions about Senate Bill 220 has been, you know, obviously, Orange County gave people a choice to choose in-person or virtual. Do we have to leave that open indefinitely? And that can be hard to implement. You know, it's, and it would be impossible to implement if people were sort of allowed to make a new choice every day. So, the State Board has confirmed that districts can require people to make a choice and stick to it as long as they leave it open until April 1st. So, those are the main updates that we've had. I'll certainly answer any questions.
Questions from board members? I'm not seeing any. Thank you so much for the update, Ms. Dubuson.
Thank you.
Can I? Oh, Ms. Howser? Yes?
My question's not about 220. My question is about, do you have any sense about where the summer school bill is? Is that 82? I don't remember what the number is.
Yes, House Bill 82 is still alive. I believe it is still in committee. So, I don't know. I mean, it passed the House. It is in the Senate now, and I haven't seen it move forward in a week or ten days. I guess actually, it may have been since, since March 9th. So, that is what I know, that it is sitting in committee. And if there's a reason why it stalled, I don't know what it is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Felder, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Dubuson. All right. So, next up would be Dr. Dani Benjamin. Dr. Dani Benjamin is co-chair of the ABC Science Collaborative, distinguished professor of Pediatrics with Duke University School of Medicine. So, Dr. Dani is here to share some recent data and to answer any questions the Board has with regards to Plan A. Dr. Benjamin?
Great. Can somebody advance the slides for me?
Dr. Dani, did you have?
I did have slides. I thought I sent them to you all.
Let's see. We can get those slides up for you.
Great. And then I can start talking to them.
Yes.
If you, if you have them, I can start speaking to them. Is that, would that be okay? I think I sent them to you and Kathleen Dawson, probably in my usual style of three minutes before I logged in, which is, I know how much superintendents like it when I do that. So, I keep trying to live up to those expectations that you all have of me throughout this state.
Dr. Good evening, Dr. Benjamin. Nice to have you here with us. Dr. Felder, if it's okay with you, I do have them. And if I'm allowed, I will share the presentation? Sounds great. I also just sent them to Melanie and Amanda. So, but if you have them and can share your screen, go for it. Okay. Just give me one moment.
Great, thanks. So, as those are getting loaded, in the interest of, for everyone, just to remind folks, one of the things that we see when we look at what's going on inside healthcare is we see dramatic pictures in the newspaper, the New York Times, if you will, about physicians and nurses and other hospital staff providing dramatic care to patients as we intubate them. And we, when we do that, we are covered head to toe in PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, and we have a great deal of safety precautions, because when you intubate patients and do other procedures on them, such as bronchiomyel or lavage or what have you, you can take, go ahead, next slide please, you can take COVID and basically have large viral loads go across the room. And so, that's this first picture here that you see, kind of in the middle of the slide with people on PPE. But if you've been to the physician or nurse practitioner or health department clinic or in the last year, you got a questionnaire, and you said whether or not you were sick, much like you like to before going to school, and you had your temperature taken, and then you said, "No, I have not had a recent COVID test." And we then provide care for you, routine care. And so, you as a patient or your family wear a cloth mask, and we as physicians, nurses, radiology technicians, microbiology technicians, phlebotomists, we put on just a regular medical mask, as you can see this picture in the bottom right-hand corner. We're in rooms that are often six by six or eight by eight with variable ventilation, including health department clinics, outpatient clinics, hospitals, inner-city health department clinics with very, very poor ventilation. And we did that throughout the pre-vaccine era, which was March to December 2020, and we continue to do that this to this day in the vaccine era. Go ahead, next slide, please. And when we first started providing care to patients, you can see on the next slide that we, a graph here on the right, on the left-hand side is the incidence of acquired SARS-CoV-2. The right-hand, excuse me, the X-axis, if you will, are tiny numbers. Those are dates. Don't worry about those. Those are every two days between April and midsummer. And you can see the blue line, which goes, slopes upward and to the right. That's the community acquisition. Thank you, Dr. Dawson. That's very kind of you. You are much better running the slides than me. I'm going to continue my usual habit, if ever on front of Orange County School Board again. I'm sending them to you at the last minute and hoping that you run them. So, this is, the blue line is the community acquisition of SARS-CoV-2 for anyone in the community. The red line is healthcare worker acquired SARS-CoV-2 while we're in the healthcare setting. The green and the yellow lines are us getting, those of us who are in healthcare, get COVID outside of the community. So, you can see this vertical line is when we put in the mask mandate, and that was in the very beginning of April of 2020. And just before and while we were starting to put in the mask mandate, we had a tremendous amount of SARS-CoV-2 relative to the community, and we got that at work. That's that red line where it goes up much faster than the blue line for the first week and a half of April. As we put in the mask mandate, we started to enforce the mask mandate. Once the mask mandate gets enforced in mid-April of 2020, we stopped getting SARS-CoV-2 at work. We stopped getting COVID at work. This is a cumulative incidence graph. That means a flat line means we're no longer getting it at work. The occasional times that we get it at work, and this is published in December of 2020, it's why I'm presenting it to you now, the occasional times that we get it throughout 2020, it's the same story over and over and over again. Two staff members go into a room, they take off their mask, and they eat. And they have a leisurely lunch of fifty, you know, thirty minutes or an hour on their lunch break, and they give each other COVID-19. So, when school boards called in the summer of 2020, when we talked with Dr. Felder in July, she was the earliest adopter, one of the two school districts that started with the ABCs. We said, "Look, don't focus on community metrics. Focus on your within-school transmission, just like we have done within healthcare." And because this work has been replicated at hundreds of hospitals, across physicians, nurses, technicians, cafeteria workers, transportation folks, custodial workers, phlebotomists, and we are much, much more intimate when we are placing an IV or cleaning up after folks or drawing blood than is typically seen in the mainstream clinic. And it's also in places such as free clinics, health department clinics, where the ventilation has been variable or poor. Now that we are vaccinated, the risk is even lower still. It's driven to near nil. It's driven to near nil in the healthcare worker environment. Go ahead, next slide, please. You all have seen these data before. These are the secondary transmission results within schools. These are the 11 school districts. And these are the school districts who bought into the idea of we're going to prevent COVID at school. Kids are going to continue to get COVID in the community. Adults will get it in the community. Our job is to prevent it once they're in school, just like they've done in healthcare. And they did so astoundingly well, over 90,000 students and staff attending in person. Recall that this is from the hybrid model of instruction or Plan B. 773 community acquired SARS-CoV-2, only 32 additional infections acquired within schools. Just as a friendly reminder, in North Carolinians, we're infecting each other the rate of about 1.1 North Carolinian. So we would have expected up to 800 or 900 in schools if these 11 school districts managed the pandemic like restaurants, movie theaters, Walmart, and anywhere else in the North Carolina community where one might travel. This is why we have started to say that school is safer than being in the community. Because rules are enforced in school. And you've got people who've dedicated their life to enforcing schools and rules and adhering to them across any number of problems. You give them a problem like COVID, they do the same thing. Okay, more recent data. This is from the surge. So just like there was a hypothesis that children might be super-spreaders, that was refuted by data in the summer. Then it was hypothesized that children might spread rapidly in Western Europe. That was refuted by late summer. Children might spread in a moderate incidence or high incidence setting like North Carolina in the fall. That hypothesis was refuted. Here, we had yet another hypothesis over the winter. Go ahead, next slide, please. It ended very high transmission during the winter surge that, that, that that might defeat these schools and they might actually have transmission. These are data that came in just over the last two weeks. We haven't published these yet. They are going through, the data themselves are going through double-checking right now. These cases, the school districts are anonymized at the moment. They get a unique identification number. I walked DPI, DHHS, and members of the legislature from both sides of the aisle and the governor's office through these data right as Senate Bill 220 was being, right before Senate Bill 220 was crafted. And this is the kind of reporting that we talked with state leadership that we would be willing to do as a part of that Senate bill. So each district gets a number. The only person who knows the number is the superintendent and anyone that the superintendent chooses to tell. You don't know anyone else's unique identifying number. You're broken down into small, medium, and large districts so that you don't have the school population because there's only one school district with a student population of greater than 150,000, for example. So we won't give the precise amount of size to the population. The community cases here, this is what was happening in January. As a reminder, right now, you know, this is at 400 to 600 cases per 100,000 population per seven days. Right now, I think in Orange County, the number is 33 on the DHHS website to give you comparison. So this is more than tenfold higher than what North Orange County is experiencing today. A tremendous number of community infections come into the schools. Not a surprise because we're at the height of the surge. Almost 4,000 folks come in infected between late October and late February. We chose that cut point because of vaccination that started to occur on February 26th. The within-school transmission remained remarkably low. You can see this at 190, only 190 transmissions. Most of these districts were in Plan A for elementary school. They were in Plan B for middle and high school. You can see the high school transmission numbers there. There were 80 within-school transmission. I went back and a couple of the superintendents kept telling me, man, I've got a bunch of infections related to basketball or the soccer. I didn't know, we're doing pretty good. So I went back and I asked all the superintendents to work with their health department to see which of their high school transmissions were sports-related. It turns out, number 46, I've gotten actually additional data. And it turns out, over 60 of the 80 high school within-school transmissions were related to sports. Over 75% of transmission in high school are related to high school sports. Over 75%. So these districts were giving limited school instruction in person, that is Plan B, but full-time athletics, which is interesting. So anyway, so that's most of the burden of infection for high schoolers. The, to the district's credit, they did an amazing job of preventing within-school transmission. And it's this kind of reporting, this kind of data transparency that the ABCs have advocated for since the beginning of the pandemic and for the state of North Carolina to require that is really an astounding leadership effort on the part of the states. It's unique and that it's written into state legislation. And it's, it's a very, very strong statement by the state of North Carolina about the safety of their constituents. Go ahead, next slide, please. So real quickly, we've got mRNA vaccines. They're the first two vaccines approved. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has also been approved. AstraZeneca looks likely that it will be approved in April or the end of April, early May. Novavax will probably be the fifth vaccine that's approved in the United States, probably not until the summer, early summer, depending on how the FDA views their European data. AstraZeneca just unblinded today. And the prevention of hospitalization, like the other products, was, was 100% prevention of hospitalization and death, just like the other vaccine products. And the safety concerns around AstraZeneca vaccine, look at the moment to be, to not be a safety concern. It is that, that product will also be viewed as safe and effective. The mRNA vaccine, you cannot get COVID from it. You, you're injected with some messenger RNA. Your cells make a little bit of the spike protein. And then the messenger RNA degrades, so you physically cannot get COVID from it. You make the spike protein, go ahead, next slide. You form antibodies to the spike protein. Those antibodies lock the spike protein into an, into a state where it cannot bind to the cells itself. So the spike protein, think of it being like this, as if it were to try and go into a keyhole and think about putting a little pad of silly putty at the end of that key. That's what the antibody does. It locks it into an unbound position. And it keeps you from putting the key into the keyhole. And therefore, the virus does not get into the cell. I never thought, when I went to medical school, that I would end up saying this in the public setting, but the vaccine is not made of embryonic cells or doesn't have a microchip in it or any of that other stuff. It's salt, sugar, buffers, a little bit of lipid to coat the mRNA and some, just some messenger RNA. It doesn't change your DNA. Go ahead, next slide. Astoundingly effective in multiple randomized trials. Protection comes online approximately 11 days after the first dose. That's been consistent across these products. And then in a study of just over a million people from Israel, the post-licensure, the Israelis agreed to transmit data to Pfizer in exchange for, in exchange for early access to the product. By, after the first dose, dramatic prevention of symptomatic COVID and death. And by after the second dose, extraordinarily effective prevention. We thought we might get a home run out of the 140 vaccine products that were in the pipeline last summer when I talked to the superintendents. I hoped we'd get one or two of these. It just so happened that the first two through the pipeline happened to be a home run. Go ahead, next slide, please. It's now been studied, these products have been studied across the UK and Europe and the United States and Israel. And the results look the same. Now, I get asked when vaccines for students might be coming on board. This is for planning purposes for next year. Pfizer, I think we're going to start vaccinating teenagers this summer. And the 13 to 15-year-olds, the, the data will probably go, the data are going in this spring for Pfizer. With any luck, we'll be able to start vaccinating that age group, also late summer or early fall. Less than 12, those studies are just now underway. And they are going to, those data will be ready by winter '21, '22. These two boys here are my two younger sons. They, I had them randomized. They volunteered to be randomized in the Pfizer trial. And they, their data are at FDA. It is an extraordinarily safe product. They did give me permission to give these photographs. And my youngest son, who is there in the orange t-shirt, gave me permission to let you know that he did have fever after the second dose. So right now, this is not a mandated vaccine. It's early in its life cycle, and of course, it's not available to everyone. So at the moment, it's not a mandated product. Go ahead, next slide, please. So the, the safety of these products, the risk-benefit ratio for children's pretty clear. This is going to be a product that certainly I would use for, for, for my children and would recommend for my patients. Very, very limited cases of fomite transmission. That is, I have the virus, I touch coffee mug, you touch the coffee mug, you touch your nose. The J&amp;J vaccine is also safe and effective. The AstraZeneca vaccine, my wife volunteered for the AstraZeneca trial. Again, if you are in the Orange County community and you're offered one of the licensed vaccines, I would just suggest that you take it. We'll all end up getting boosters a couple of years from now, anyway. We're going to be dealing with COVID for years. This is based on evolution and probability and the variants. They don't escape the vaccines now, but they, eventually they will. This will end up probably like flu, where you have to get the occasional booster. And we'll be looking to continue mitigation strategies in the fall. Go ahead, next slide, please. Now, what, if, if, in thinking about Senate Bill 220, where are the areas of highest risk? Clearly, sports. Although that's not in the Senate bill, for high schoolers, there's clearly much more risk associated with sports, particularly something like basketball and soccer, compared to in-person instruction. What do I mean by higher risk? Well, my sons, three of my four sons play baseball. I fully intend for them to play baseball, provided that they don't get cut this year. And they, if school sports are offered at their school, I think it's safe enough for sports. As a parent, as a physician, if you've got masking in place, I think it's something that you can safely offer. And however, sports are a higher, clearly a higher-risk activity than classroom instruction. So you want to make sure your mitigation strategies are in place if you're offering sports, foremost among them, masking. Lunch, lunch, don't play around with breakfast and lunch at school. You want to be outside, if at all possible. You want to be at least six feet apart from each other. Whether or not cohorting helps, it's long been speculated that cohorting helps. That has not really been shown to reduce within-school transmission or have an impact. Distancing, however, in the unmasked, unmasked environment like lunch is extremely important. So you want these kids apart from each other. And you want them to have a very time-limited period of time without their mask on. My sons went to school today at Chapel Hill. And the only question I asked of them was, did you have fun? How did they handle lunch? Because that's the only time that they and their peers would be without their mask on. Released on Friday with, were the Utah data and the Missouri data. And the week before that, the Massachusetts data. The Massachusetts data talks about three feet versus six feet. There's some flaws to that data. It does not well describe individual risk, and that should not be used to think through individual risk. It is somewhat reassuring that three feet looks to be, as far as community risk, three feet does not look to be any different than six feet. The Utah data were powerful data in that the folks out in Utah not only did contact tracing, they also did testing of all the students. And then they did genotyping of the viruses that they isolated. And in so doing, they showed that a lot of the time that we thought maybe within-school transmission was occurring, within-school transmission did not occur, as documented by the genotypes of the virus. So by contact tracing, you might have child one and child two, both had a positive test. Because they were exposed to each other, you would put that down as a within-school transmission. But when the Utah team did genotyping of those viruses, they showed conclusively that those children, in fact, could not have infected each other. And that this, because the viruses were so genotypically different, and that the secondary attack rate is less than 1%, it was 0.7%. And that the methods in North Carolina, which some folks have criticized as saying that we underestimate within-school transmission, it appears, based on the Utah data, that if anything, we overestimate within-school transmission, even in, even considering the possibility of asymptomatic spread. It's a nicely done study. Missouri looked at modifications to quarantine, which we can talk about. That's some early preliminary work by Missouri. Missouri also had data that was not published last week, but will be published next month, which looked at weekly testing of students in the adapted curriculum and showed a less than 1% positive test rate across the adapted curriculum, across school districts, in the height of the surge in Southern Illinois and St. Louis. Go ahead, next slide, please. These are some of the references, the, including the need for mitigation. There needs to be one more reference there, which I sent to Dr. Felder, which is the data from Florida, where they have not been masking. They have not been, not only not masking, they've been doing no distancing. It's been a difficult situation down there in schools. And they just have shown testament to the need for strict adherence to mitigation in Florida. It's not as impressive as the Israeli data, but it's very, very clear that you need to have mitigation. The Cobb County, Georgia data show that masking is especially important during, during lunch. And you can get some transmission there, even if you're fastidious within the classroom. There is some preliminary data on middle and high school from Western Europe, where they're using distances of a meter routinely in, in Great Britain and in the European Union. Some locales in Germany are using 1.1. Some locales in Germany are using 1.5 meters, but most are using three foot distancing or 3.3 feet distancing, one meter. High school districts open in what we would consider Plan A. And then the Massachusetts data, which again is not really good for individual risk and much more related to community approach to this. Go ahead, next slide, please. I think that's it. So what I told, my perspective on the data right now is that elementary schools, we've got enough data should be in Plan A. If school districts struggle in Plan A, first of all, they should, ideally they should be in Plan B first. Orange County's done that. If they struggle in Plan A, then they need to do course correction as it relates to risk mitigation. High schools can be in Plan A, provided that there's oversight and transparency of infection data. We're fairly early in the data arc, if you will, of high school and middle school as it relates to minimal social distancing or three foot social distancing. And then following the DHHS toolkit and plans being submitted to North Carolina DHHS. We've received 40 such plans from 40 different districts from throughout the state. As of, excuse me, 39 as of Friday at 5:00 PM. That 39 districts will be going into Plan A for high school and middle school. The first eight of those went into Plan A for high school and middle school today. So we should have some of the very first data that's, shows some success or failure of that about two weeks from now. The best predictors of success in Plan A is extremely strong mitigation, especially mask adherence plans to ensure mitigation such as monitoring or auditing. And success in Plan B. So a district like Orange County that's got some Plan B under its belt can predict pretty well how well things might go in Plan A. This, this slide, I'm sorry that says Plan A should be safe for Gaston. Was presented to Gaston County. I only do two or three of these per night. So I apologize for, I know that I'm not presenting to Gaston County at the moment. But they had asked me, you know, what was their success in Plan B? I had eight months of their data, which I reviewed with them specifically. And based on those data, they asked me the likelihood of their success in Plan A. And they did extraordinarily well in Plan B and I told them that. Go ahead, next slide, please. This is the leadership team here. You all have seen at least a couple of these folks in prior presentations. Go ahead, next slide, please. There you go.
Thank you so much, Dr. Benjamin. Board members, are there questions for Dr. Benjamin? Mr. Atherson?
Sure. So thank you so much for being here tonight. One of the questions I have, I have a few questions, but obviously I know other board members do. The question I had is, you had mentioned that the highest transmission rate was in sports. And could you give us some context? Is that with sports that don't mask or sports that are masking? Or could you just give us some context and mitigations that are around sports?
That was in districts that were doing a good job with masking. They were having the students mask. And the it's clear that basketball was a real challenge for the districts, as was soccer. Basketball probably more so. When you're looking at sports like track and field, baseball, softball, tennis, golf, I would anticipate that those sports would do quite well. Baseball, softball, really the, all the action is around the batter, the catcher and the umpire. Even if maybe a little bit of first base. Golf and tennis should be, those, those sports, when we've looked at them by other publications, other peer reviewed work, baseball, softball, track and field, golf and tennis have done well across the country. I would put soccer, lacrosse, football is our next level up in risk stratum. And then higher up than that is basketball. And then highest obviously is, is wrestling. I would anticipate very low transmission in your low risk sports if you adhere to masking.
Ms. Smiley? Get a follow up question on the sports. Just a follow up question on those, the sports that have been seen to be higher risk. I know that, I think it was Utah was doing a program of regular testing of students as one of the mitigation strategies for sports teams. Is there any data, do you have any, and I know the testing, there's pros and cons to it. So, so what are your thoughts about that and whether that might be feasible? Do they have any data out of that?
Okay, that's a great idea. And Utah did do that. That's correct. So just to let folks know, because that's not published yet, but to let folks who are listening know that. Because Utah essentially linked participation in sports across the state to testing. Now, they were not trying to make like an NBA bubble, if you will. And that's not the goal here or the NCAA bubble. What they were trying to do was layer in some extra protection for the athletes. And because that can be done with a rapid and rapid testing is options that are there that are open for school districts. Working with DHHS, that has a lot of appeal to me, both scientifically and what they observed. They observed that there was a lot of pushback initially from schools across the state that thought, oh my gosh, how can we possibly do this? It turns out that these high schools very quickly found a way to do that. They did it well. They have over 100,000 tests that they have done in their, in, in their schools out there. I suspect, you know, we've talked at length with Adam Hirsch, who's the lead investigator out there. And he's in the ABC Science Collaborative National Program that we have. I suspect that those data will come out this summer. But it looks like two things. Number one, the schools, at least in Utah, could definitely do it. Number two, they benefited from some ABC Science Collaborative Advisory Support. And like, all right, look, this is how much, this is kind of the frequency that you might want to do this. This keeps the burden reasonable for these particular schools. This is what keeps you out of kind of a lot of drama around that. Clearly, we could explore if Orange County were interested in pursuing that sort of thing. And there is, especially for some of these sports where, you know, the masks slip off the kids' faces. You know, I mean, my sons were playing baseball on Sunday and, you know, the masks slipped down off the kids' noses and they, and it's imperfect. The risk, I think, is extremely low in that particular sport and in the sports that I mentioned. But if you wanted to layer another layer of mitigation strategy, the sports community is one that is uniquely fitted and thoughtful for testing. And I'm not a big fan at all, as you, as Smiley, as you may recall, I'm not a big fan at all of widespread shotgun-like approach to testing because that, just the errors and the lack of the, the test performance. But in focused areas like sports, it has some real potential upside.
Ms. Hauser?
I have two questions. One builds on that, because it looks like we may be getting a grant from the state for testing. I think there's a, and I'm curious how you might recommend we look at using that and applying that. And my second question is a few months ago, Merck was making some promising progress with the therapy that they were even testing on kids and pregnant women, as I understand it. I was wondering if there's any information about how that's going.
Sure. So the therapies, let's take the therapies first. The therapies, right now, there haven't been really any home runs other than dexamethasone in a randomized trial done last spring, where it definitely improves mortality for the certain patient groups that are hospitalized. In the pre-hospital setting, it's been much more smaller incremental proof of concept kind of therapeutic advances. Children in particular, there've been about 17, 1,750 to 2,000 cases of what's known as MISC or multi-organ inflammatory syndrome related to COVID. It looks kind of like, a kind of like Kawasaki's like picture where it's an inflammatory response post-infection. Those children almost always do well when they are given steroids and IVIG. As a clinician, it just looks a whole lot like how we, you know, you walk in at 7:00 PM and you see the child and they're irritable and they're not, they're, they're fussy and their inflammatory markers are up. And they get IVIG overnight, you come back to see them at 7:00 AM and they're, they're pert right back up and respond very well. Now, as far as the state stuff, so where would I, if I were a school district and could wave a magic wand? There's three places, there's four places where I would do testing. And number one is if I were in a school district, these tend to be urban school districts, but if I were in a school district where I very, I had a, I had a high-risk student population that was very nervous about coming back to school. And I wanted to help build trust in that community, to help encourage those families to come back to school. Screening is a part of trust building. As screening testing has potential upside. This is as much a cultural question for Orange County schools as it is scientific. And we can help you with that. And the person who's on point for that kind of testing program is Kenesha Zimmerman. She's, obviously she's the co-chair of the ABCs. I can arrange for conversation between her and either the superintendent or the board members on this question. She's got, she does have a protocol for this. She's willing to, I know she knows Dr. Felder well. And her thinking on this, she's really considered one of the national, one of three or four national leaders, if not the national leader on this. So I hesitate to talk in too much detail when my colleague knows more about it than I do. So, but I would say that that is a potentially good use, establishing trust. Number two, sports, as was discussed with Ms. Smiley. Number three, the adapted curriculum, because those children are not masked, that has, we've been studying in Missouri, the rate there is low. That's probably the third way that I would do it. And then the fourth thing that I would do, and I would probably prioritize this over the adapted curriculum because Jason Newland from Missouri is going to come out with the adapted curriculum being a much lower risk than we thought. So this, this, this item here that I'm about to mention, I, I think is, is up there, is kind of equal value to sports and trust building. And it's just kind of a question of what Orange County would like to do. And that is routinely quarantine is, if you're not going to be tested at all, it's 14 days. Do you use testing to shorten the amount of quarantine? And can you use testing to even, as a proof of concept, bring the length of quarantine even lower still? With the secondary attack rate being substantially less than 1%. You know, this has an appeal to it because you're going to be quarantining 100 or 200 children for every within school transmission that you have. Keeping those kids in more face-to-face instruction via testing. And if they test negative, they can come back to school earlier, has a real appeal. And offering that in school or at the school environment has some, a very appealing equity sense to it because the families that struggle the most with getting their children to even a free testing site can be the families that benefit the most from their children in face-to-face instruction and might benefit the most from that testing being offered at schools. Dr. Zimmerman and I, under her leadership, again, she's, she's our leader for testing. Under her leadership, we'll be instituting a protocol for that and, and putting that forward to the National Institute of Health in a, in a different school district. Those would be the areas that I would look at closely if I were OCS and wanted to think about testing.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we're talking about PCR testing now, right?
Could be a mix, actually. So whether it's, regardless of the technology, there's 347 products when I last looked. So each of which has pros and cons. And going over them now is probably outside of scope and certainly outside of the time for the board chair.
I have one question and I'm seeing you, Ms. Smiley, too. As I'm, one of the things that I am curious about and wanted to ask you about, which we will be getting to when we're talking about our middle and high schools later. But since you're here now, I wanted to ask about lunchtime because that's been sort of a hot topic for our board. And one of the things that our high schools have said is difficult is to have students eat outside at the high school level. And so in Plan B, students, I think, are going outside some and also eating in classrooms some with the six-foot distancing. And I believe one of the recommendations, which we'll hear later, is for when we have, if we have Plan A, we would use some of the bigger spaces in our schools, like auditoriums or gyms, to spread some of those groups out more for lunchtime. So that there would be six feet between them. But one of the things that I remember you talking about earlier, when we were talking about elementary schools and how we were going to do lunch, was that because of the aerosolization of this virus, that you were concerned about having multiple groups eating in the same space, even if they weren't there at the same time. And so I was just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit.
Great. So job one is go outside if you can. If at all possible, go outside. And that was the, my number one question when my sons got into the pickup truck this afternoon. I, I came out of the hospital, went and picked them up. And that, that was my question for them. And they, they ate outside. And that was my question for them, and they ate outside. The. The second priority is having the children distanced. By at least six feet. If you can do that in the classroom setting where there's. A limited number of children, great. If you have to move them into larger spaces. That benefit that you gain, excuse me, that benefit that you gain. At more than six feet. Is. Is greater, the real risk of droplet. Between zero and six feet with that, with that mask off, that real risk is. Reducing that is, is really the second most important thing that you can do other than eat outside. Now, there is some data from Europe that they're getting away with three feet distancing, and I. I would not do that for much. I just, I would, I would have the kids. Six feet apart because they're unmasked. If you have to rotate when they eat lunch. The virus does not hang out like measles does. In the duct system or in the air for thirty and sixty minutes. It, it falls out. So even if you rotate the kids through. Keeping them greater than six feet, I just would not play around with mealtime. And if you have to go to larger spaces. But you're greater than six feet is better. As far as transmission is concerned. In my interpretation of the data. And being. Kind of cohorting at three feet, which is what the Europeans have done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smiley.
I just have two questions. I imagine you're in touch with DHHS a lot, and so this is sort of about. Direction of where their guidance might be going, if you have a sense. So there's two things that I'm wondering about. One is. You know. I know that middle and high schools have the plan, the option for Plan A, the public schools, right, because of the law, but. The charter schools don't yet because the state hasn't yet provided that, DHHS hasn't provided that as an option. So I was curious if you knew what additional evidence they might be waiting for to say, just generally for middle and high school. It's fine to do Plan A. That's the first piece. And then the other piece of guidance is. Just understanding how very little fomite transmission there seems to be. And how much money everyone is spending on constantly sanitizing and how much time our teachers. How much time it actually takes them to go around in between classes in middle and high school and like sanitize each desk, for example. Do you have any sense of whether any of that guidance may be loosening now or for next year?
Okay, so for charters, when I spoke at length with both. DPI and members from. Both sides of the aisle and with. And the other leaders at the state level, the real focus was on the one point five million. Nearly one point five million children in traditional K through twelve, rather than. Children in private schools or in charter schools. And there were different reasons for that focus outlined by different leaders.
I was more curious, I'm sorry, it wasn't really DPI and the, and the state, I was more curious, like DHHS, I think, has not changed its. Guidance to make Plan A, like it has made Plan A available to middle and high schools. Because of the state law, but it hasn't generally made that available to other types of schools, was my understanding. I'd heard there needed to be even a state law in order for charter schools, for example, to do that. So I was just curious about what's their sort of threshold for. Evidence for distances less than six feet, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I just. It probably is. Best for me. I'm hesitant to speculate on DHHS.
That's fine.
Especially as it relates to charter schools, because that can be. Not, all those questions are kind of all intertwined around pending legislation and. It's probably best for me not to, I hate to dodge, I think as many times as I've been in front of Orange County. That might be the first time that I dodged a question, but I think that's in everybody.
That's fine. I was hoping you would know, because, you know, it speaks a little bit to me. I think there's really, really good evidence about the three feet for elementary schools. And there's less of it for middle and high school. And so I was curious what their threshold was going to be for. You know, saying that more generally, but you don't have to speculate.
I think I, I can answer that, Ms. Smiley, briefly, if you don't mind. Just, the DHHS's guidance, since before the Senate bill was passed. Was Plan B for six through twelve. And that hasn't changed. So the legislature changed it, you know, for six through twelve for LEAs. And so overrode that for DHHS, but DHHS has never differentiated between charters and traditional public schools. And, and they don't now. It's just that the legislature has made that differentiation in Senate Bill two twenty. And there, the explanation from the bill sponsor was, so why charters weren't included. Was essentially that they, parents have the choice whether to stay in charters or go somewhere else if they want a different plan. That said, I, I expect DHHS's guidance to continue to evolve. But it raises a tricky question because Senate Bill two twenty says that schools have to follow the toolkit as it existed on March fourth. So that is a bridge we'll have to cross if they update it.
Thank you. Ms. Smiley, did you want to say something?
Oh, no, that, that was all very helpful. I was just curious about the cleaning piece and if you had any. Intel on that.
Yeah, so we have, I don't know. Getting CDC and DHHS to. Pack differently on cleaning itself. Be a fairly. That's a substantive lift in the sense that. There's some things that really do prevent kids from having access to face-to-face instruction. And around quarantine, testing and other items. When we, so I don't know how much guidance will change in the next two months. We have, are providing for superintendents and we will be providing the slides publicly available. Guidance on what to, if you had money to spend on COVID mitigation. How would you, how would one spend it based on the evidence? And cleaning is toward the bottom of that list. So the rate of fomite transmission is extraordinarily low. Hasn't been a case, culture-proven documented case of fomite transmission in schools. We really do think that the evidence, the evidence is very clear, it's really. Getting your mask compliance into the ninety-some odd, ninety-plus percentile, so greater than ninety percent of all humans. At all times with mask over nose, mouth and chin, except while eating and drinking. And focusing on that's far and away number one, ensuring that you have staff and resources available to. Monitor, track and show that you're adhering to that. Spending money on or resources on contact. Contact tracing. I'm sorry, I'm on the inpatient service, so I have to actually, when texts come in, I have to get my phone to make sure that. It's not the patient who needs me at this moment. Schools need to do contact tracing, pay for the resources to do that, and then transmission or transparency around data. And when we worked with. You know, DHHS and DPI, the governor's office in both sides of the legislature about this. That's really what we focused on was ensuring the mask mandate stayed in place. And transparency in data. We think that that's really important as these schools that are in middle and high school in particular. As they go, for the districts that go into Plan A and districts can go into Plan A. If you can stay three feet apart, that's, I would, that's ideal. If you are going to be having no social distancing at all, it is all the more important to. Have your data monitored by the state of North Carolina, so that course correction can occur. And the, the state bought into that, to that model. So I, clean, resources for cleaning. Put your resources into allowing the kids to eat outside. Buy what, purchase what you need to purchase to make that happen, rather than Windex.
Thank you. So I am really thinking about time right now, and I know Dr. Benjamin is very busy. So I just want to check in with board members and see if we have any last pressing things. Before we wrap this conversation up. Mr. Atherton?
Yes, the other question I had was your perspective on buses. And the distancing on our, on our buses or recommendations. I know there's changes around it, but I haven't seen like research to discuss, you know, you know, what you should do. And such a closed space for, you know, possibly long durations, so.
Now, the best data here actually come from air travel. Where if you have, if you're masked. And you are clustered together. You know, I, I don't, I don't know about, I haven't ridden on an airplane in a while, but when I did ride on airplanes, I was. Typically in the back of the plane rather than the front of the plane. And I know that I was very, very close to the humans around me. And the transmission there has been low even on transcontinental flights. Of, you know, eight, nine, twelve hours. Now, there is. There, there is a fair amount of the way airflow works through the airplane. That there is rationale for interpreting the airplane data and saying, you know, the windows. On the school buses should be cracked open. To facilitate airflow through the buses. And I think that that is a reasonable interpretation. Of the airplane data. But when you think about as close as one is to each other in the coach section of the airplanes. Flying for as long as folks do on transcontinental or intercontinental flights. The risk of transmission. On the buses. Provided that you have masking and mask adherence should be low. That's also seen in other transportation settings where masking is enforced. When masking is not enforced, buses become a real problem, and that's also been documented.
Thank you so much, Dr. Benjamin. I'm gonna check with board members one last time, any other final pressing question for Dr. Benjamin? Okay, well, we really appreciated Dr. Benjamin, as always. We are so grateful to you.
Thank you. That's very kind of you to say. And then if you, the data on. The districts currently in Plan A should be coming into the public domain sometime between March thirty-first. And April fifteenth, depending on when the House and Senate Education Committees would like me to make that. First presentation. Contractually, it's to occur March thirty-first. But that may go into the first week or so of April. And that, those will be out into the public. And thank you again for having me, and it's been good working with you all. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Take care. So now is the point that we will talk about Plan A for our elementary schools, and I will turn it back to Dr. Felder.
Thank you so much, Mrs. McKenzie. All right, so next, as Mrs. McKenzie stated, we're going to discuss Plan A for elementary schools, which is required per SB two twenty. For students opting for in-person learning. After discussing elementary schools, we'll present a recommendation for middle and high schools. We are asking that questions be held until the end of each section. And so with that, this slide compares Plan A and Plan B, as discussed and shared with. Via Dr. Benjamin. The only difference between the two plans is the three feet of physical distancing in classrooms, but not including meals. Next slide. So as a result of Senate Bill two twenty, the district surveyed families at the elementary level to determine their choice. For Plan A or one hundred percent remote learning. Plan B is no longer an option at the elementary tier. This slide shows the results of the elementary family survey by school. Let's give you a minute to look at that. All right, next slide, please. So what is the timeline and the process for implementing Plan A at the elementary school level? Well, we are proposing starting on Wednesday, April seventh. Why the seventh? Well, spring break is March twenty-ninth through April first. April second is a holiday, and April fifth and sixth, we are proposing as elementary teacher workdays. So that brings us to the start date of April seventh, and we checked with the attorney. And are in line with what is expected per the law. We are also recommending four days a week, Monday through Thursday, that two is allowable per Senate Bill two twenty. With keeping asynchronous Fridays. As even in Plan B, some of our teachers will continue to teach concurrently, so that hybrid model, which we know is a challenge. That will continue. Teachers need time to plan for their groups, they need time to catch up. They need time to engage in PD for this year and next year, and they need time in their PLCs. Additionally, enhanced cleaning will continue on Fridays. Teachers will also continue to check in with students to ensure they are set up to work asynchronously, and teachers. Will also continue to hold small groups and one-on-one session, all the things that they've been doing so well in Plan B. So we are continuing with asynchronous Fridays. With regards to the hours, we will continue as we've had at the elementary tier of in Plan B, so that's nine thirty to three. Additionally, that minimal physical distancing in classrooms at three feet. It may be greater than three feet, depending on the number of students returning. Lunch, again, outdoors is expected at six feet for all the reasons that Dr. Danny mentioned. Danny Benjamin mentioned, as well as six feet when students are consuming meals indoors. Quarantining. The ability to follow the new CDC guidelines, we're going to discuss that soon, but that is still to be determined. It's still the fourteen days. Masking, strict adherence to masking. We have not missed a beat with that. Our students are doing a great job, our staff are as well. And so we will continue with no mask breaks. The only time those masks come off is during mealtime. And, and again, we mentioned the additional teacher workday, the fifth was already a workday. Want to add the sixth as a workday for our elementary teachers as well. So that's the plan for the timeline and process for Plan A for elementary schools. Before we open for questions, want to spend some time giving out principal, who's representing the elementary tier. Mr. Chris Marks, principal of Grady A. Brown Elementary School, and I'm going to beat him to it, because I know he's going to say. The number one school in America. He is going to speak to, you know, he's. He is going to speak to, you know, he's going to say it. He is going to speak to what the expectations are during the instructional day, not only for students who are in person, but also for students who are 100% remote learners. And so he's going to share that with us, as well as how principals are supporting that expectation. So without further ado, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Marks.
Thank you, Dr. Felder, and thank you for the board for having us on tonight. As we all know, this has kind of been a plan, ongoing plan to get our students back in the buildings. And we just appreciate the opportunities to continually work together to bring as many students who are comfortable and families that elect to come back into our buildings. As Dr. Felder said, you know, we're looking at Plan A and kind of what that's going to look like in each of our buildings. So as the elementary cohort, we got together and we just kind of worked through what the expectations were within Plan A with Dr. Felder's recommendation to the board of how to move forward to the end of this academic school year. So as you can see on the slide there, Plan A is going to be in person. Those families that elected to come back face to face will return and receive a full day of instruction with that, within that 9:30 to 3 o'clock timeframe at the elementary tier, Monday through Thursday. The students who elected to remain 100% virtual, they will continue under that virtual academy, that 100% remote. And they would, you know, work throughout the day, one to four hours of synchronous live instruction, working with their teacher, their science teachers and their rosters as they work through that instructional piece with their teacher, whether they get on for some of those core mini lessons where they get on for those core small groups that teachers schedule with the students. So anywhere from one to four hours of that synchronous live instruction will also incorporate some asynchronous work during that school day for a virtual student. And then also that we have a handful of students in a district that still work on the third offering. The third offering was that self-paced option that we offered way back at beginning of the school, towards the beginning of the school year. Just listening to my colleagues, we all agreed there's about 10 students district-wide that are still in that self-paced option. And that is the third option that is still available for our virtual students. Not even though they cannot, my understanding, they cannot enroll in that now, but that we still have a handful of students. That's still part of that third offering. And then virtual students also receive two to four hours of asynchronous non-live learning activities per day, Monday through Thursday as well. Once again, there's a self-paced option that I discussed, and they continue with that daily flexible schedule through the admin and platform. And then they get that scheduled support from assigned learning coaches that the district has. And then asynchronous Fridays, as Dr. Felder recommended, I will continue. That has been a huge benefit, I think, for our students and our staff. We've been able to give them some pretty critical lesson planning. We have given some pretty critical small group time with some students that we've kind of identified that need that kind of extra one-on-one time. But for all students, learning continues on Fridays. So it's not a three-day weekend. All students will be continuing that asynchronous piece on Fridays, and they would complete one to four hours of asynchronous, non-live learning activities on Fridays. And sometimes, like I said, they'll participate in some personalized kind of synchronous live sessions with the teachers who might be pulling together small groups at the discretion of teachers in schools. And then all students will participate in some morning check-in sessions, some social emotional check-ins, morning meetings at the elementary level as well. And then homework may be assigned to all students one or more days a week, and that, you know, that's all tiers, pre-K through 12. So just please note at the bottom, all these are approximate. Do not replace the teacher's decision-making. Next slide talks about how we're going to monitor this instructional day, how we're going to be supporting that. So our biggest thing for Plan A is monitoring the student attendance, which will be entered into the Power School and closely monitoring. I just, I also want to kind of give a shout out to our social workers and our counselors and our data managers who keep track, who pay attention to our students and their attendance, who help do home visits, who help do phone calls, who help support teachers with emails, because this has been a pretty critical factor with remote learning all the way around. Because it's just a critical support staff reaching out to families and kind of make, make sure we stay in contact with that attendance. And then 100% virtual, kind of what our expectations through the instructional day. Once again, we're going to be paying attention to the attendance, making sure they're being accurately and appropriately logged into Power School based on the participation in their synchronous classes and their submission of assignments. And also, we expect all virtual students to continually be supported by not only administration, but all of our instructional coaches, our instructional support staff, our teacher assistants. They're regularly joining those virtual classes to support students and teachers, whether it be breakout rooms, whether it be small reading groups. And then also, I just want to kind of give a shout out to our district for their dedication and consistency and investment of technology, because that's been a huge asset, and it's being leveraged throughout the district to enhance student engagement and collaboration. You know, our, our staff has been handed lots of technology and done a great job of figuring out what's going to work best, not only for them instructional as professionals, but also what's going to work best for our students and our families. So once again, attendance is going to be closely monitored virtually. Concerns are reported to student support staff, i.e. once again, our social workers, our counselors and administration, and we're going to be reaching out to those families to address any barriers to access remote instruction. And then our self-paced students, once again, they're going to be having that work completion, participation is being closely monitored by those assigned learning coaches. And they're going to be meeting weekly with students to check in and provide support as needed. And then once again, that synchronous Fridays, learning continues on all Fridays for all students. Once again, provided directions to complete asynchronous assignments on Fridays, student attendance, once again, is monitored based on that participation of the synchronous activities and classes, also those assignments. And then teachers will maintain kind of communication logs. That can be through email, through ClassDojo, kind of what groups they're working with. Attendance logs are recorded for professional development and PLC meetings on Friday afternoons or another time during the week. So this is kind of how, you know, what the expectations are, especially at the elementary level, and also what Plan A is going to look like at the elementary level.
Thank you so much, Mr. Marks, and you did a great job. So thank you for representing the elementary principals so well. And so I, I just want to add a layer on to, to reiterate that no student, absolutely no students will be left in the back of the room. No students will be unattended to or go untaught. And if any family has any questions or concerns about their students instructional day, they should first begin with the teacher and then the principal. And after that, central office. And if you're not sure who to call, you can call me. And so I just want to reiterate that we do have expectations for the instructional day for our students who are learning in person as well as 100% remote. So thank you again, Mr. Marks, but stay tuned as there could be some questions forthcoming. All right. So we're going to move right along to our next slide. And so this slide just outlines meal updates and transportation updates in Plan A for our elementary students. I will just not going to read the whole thing, just a few highlights. All students continue to be eligible for free breakfast and lunch, so that's all students. For our remote learners, meals can be picked up Monday through Thursday from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM at all schools, with the exception of New Hope, CW Stanford and Partnership Academy. On Friday, on Fridays, students will receive a three deal, a three deal, a three-day meal box option. And the pickup is from 10:30 to 1:00 PM, 10:30 AM to 1:00 PM at Orange High School, Cedar Ridge High School, Bradley Hill Middle School and New Hope. Or they can pick up from an off-site distribution location, and locations and schedules will remain the same for Fridays. And so next, we will shift to masking. And so here, please be advised again that strict adherence to masking is still the expectation in Plan A and will be enforced in the district. We continue to do a great job of monitoring. And so now, Mr. Jarwin Hester, who is our new Director of Safety and Environmental Health, who also has hit the ground running, will present information on how we will continue to monitor this critical mitigation strategy in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Members, staff, parents and guests, thank you for the opportunity. First, let's talk about universal masking. Now, as we find and we talk, we listen to Doc, from Dr. Benjamin, universal masking and the masking mitigation strategies have definitely played a part. It's a most important tool, and it's our greatest tool in fighting the spread of COVID. And here at, at Orange County School District, we're looking at importantly, wearing masks and specifically how to wear them correctly. So we're leveraging our staff and schools for A and B to conduct weekly checks for mask wearing. Now, with the assistance of central office and school staffing, we want to ensure mitigate those strategies are successful, and we want to be in compliance. So what we're also doing, we're pulling videos of compliance with requirements as well as using a tip line. And you see that email there as well as the phone number. In addition to that, the COVID captains, which were, when they're in place, will be used to check locations and assure that compliance is being met. And so when you, when we talk about this, we're looking at masking as the critical piece in any of the discussions, even as you heard earlier today, for, for, in classrooms and hallways and all settings in, in the school and the school rooms and offices. So thank you, Dr. Felder.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. And so board, that brings us to questions and feedback with regards to Plan A at the elementary level.
Ms. Doyle and then Mr. Atherton?
Thank you for the presentation. And one of the questions I had was the discussion around switching from Plan B to Plan A. One of the logistical concerns I've heard expressed is the bus transportation logistics. And I believe Dr. Benjamin said that with Plan A, you can have two students per seat. And I'm just curious if the shifting of the meals, the change in the meal plan, is that enough to accommodate the increase in additional students on a given day needing transportation? Or is that anticipated to be a difficult logistical lift?
Thank you for the question, Mrs. Doyle. At this time, we do think it's sufficient. But I'm going to ask Sarah Pitts and/or Mr. Larry Albert to chime in. But we, we, based on what we know right now in terms of families who are choosing transportation, buses, we think the meal plan, given the buses that we have, will work. Ms. Pitts or Mr. Albert, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, ma'am. Hello, board, Dr. Felder. At, at this time, we, we're seeing a uptick in student ridership requests. So with, with the, with the meal distribution, we're, we're needing to pull all of our drivers to, to transport students to and from school at this time. So it's just, it's putting a little bit of a burden on, on our day-to-day operation when getting them to and from school. I hope that, that answers your question.
And we will continue to monitor and make adjustments as needed, that's for sure. And I understand Ms. Pitts does not have access as a presenter, so. Keep moving. If she has something to say, she will chime in, but she does need access. Yep.
Mr. Atherton, you're next.
All right, thank you. So first of all, I am, you know, I, when we released and everybody else released the comparison of Plan A and B and minimal distancing, I'm glad we're explicitly saying meals will be six foot apart. Because I, that's been the number one question I believe I've been getting. The real one that I had was with the teacher workdays. Right now, April 5th is a teacher workday, and April 6th would be an additional teacher workday. I'd like to know how much would it cost for us to pay our TAs to actually be in the classroom to help the teachers, because I know our policy does not allow them currently to be paid. And I think we need them to be there, especially helping the teachers rearrange, doing the planning. So if Ms. Rath or someone could give us an estimate of what that would cost to allow the TAs to help on those teacher workdays?
Sure, Mr. Atherton, I appreciate the question. From, you are correct, April the 5th was a teacher workday that was in our original calendar that was approved. And therefore, as a result, TAs were not scheduled to work, nor were they scheduled to receive pay for that day. Based upon our current full-time equivalence of teacher assistance, to pay them to work that day would roughly be between $9,000 and $10,000.
I believe that would be well-staffed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rath. Other board members? Ms. Smiley, then Ms. Hauser?
I am excited that we're moving forward with this. I, I was concerned to see that the students remaining virtual would only have one to four hours of time with their teacher. You know, my children right now receive, you know, spend five hours a day with their teacher in sort of a regular schedule. And so I was concerned to see that. I don't know what it's shaping up with under this plan, but I know that under Plan B, like two-thirds of our black families had chosen virtual. And so I was just hoping someone could speak more to that and sort of how, how can we sort of justify reducing? If that's what's, that's what it seems like to me is happening, like how can we justify reducing the amount of time that virtual students have with their teacher?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Smiley, for the question. And, and so what was presented tonight is pretty much what we have, we shared back when we first implemented Plan B. And I think the key is what's at the bottom of that slide and what Mr. Marks emphasized, and that these are approximate and do not replace a teacher's decision-making. And so, Mr. Marks, I don't know if you have anything else to add there?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to chime in and want to say, of all the challenges that we've, that we've kind of worked through with COVID, one of the biggest challenges up to date has been this kind of hybrid approach that we've kind of placed our teachers in. Yeah, meeting the instructional needs of face-to-face students and also meeting the instructional needs of the virtual students, because there are kind of blended rosters, and teachers have done a fantastic job. And once again, I want to say thank you for the dedication for technology of kind of integrating that technology. We have, at least in my, my building, we have teachers walking around in their classrooms, pushing their laptops on top of a movable cart, addressing instructional needs of students who are virtually at home, and also interacting with students who are face-to-face. So one to four, I think, is a minimum approximate, because I think there's, there's actually more time. You know, students who are, are signed up for virtual that are getting that designated instructional time. But, you know, they have tackled the challenge that's been presented to them. They're, they're being very innovative with what they've been handed. And, you know, they, we, we recognize there's only nine weeks left in our, in our school year. So they are, you know, forefront, making sure students are receiving instructional needs that they, that they have. So I know that timeframe kind of on the slide looks kind of minimal, but they are meeting the needs of those virtual students.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Yeah, I would just, I mean, I would appreciate knowing. Dr. Felder, you know, in how many places in our district are students who are in virtual only receiving one or two live hours a day with a teacher? That just, that's pretty concerning to me, and I, and I would be happy to put more resources in to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, I completely support that, Ms. Smiley. I think it's a very point. On a related note, I was curious. Now, I was actually pretty impressed with the, the overall response from the elementary school and how many families chose Plan A. So that was pretty interesting. I'm worried now, I'm, now we're, I'm, now that we have these new numbers, do we have any more blended classes? Because I know in elementary, we were originally planning to have virtual separate from hybrid, but we couldn't always do it because of the class size restriction. And I'm wondering now, under the new model, will the classes be? And I'm wondering now, under the new model, will the classes be separated so our virtual kids will have their own teachers? Or will they still be blended?
Dr. Felder?
Yes, I had to find my unmute button. And so, yes, there will continue to be blended classrooms. Mr. Marks, you want to speak to that as well?
Yes, ma'am. And that's completely accurate. You know, at this point in school year, you know, online communities have been developed. At this point in school year, teacher-student relationships are very much set in. They know each other as teachers. They know each other as learners. There's been multiple shifts, as everyone knows, throughout the instructional year, and it just will be more detrimental to kind of shift teachers and students around again at this point in the school year with the short amount of time we have left. So there will continue to be blended classrooms, at least through the, at this end of the academic school year, at least in my building.
And thank you, Mr. Marks. And so I, I will say you'll hear later on in the presentation when we get to the proposed recommendation. Again, we don't have tea leaves, crystal balls, none of those things with regards to next year. But realizing that schools need to plan, the district needs to plan, families need to plan. We do want to propose a recommendation for next year. And next year, we are proposing a standalone virtual academy so that we can eliminate the need for concurrent or hybrid teaching, that blended model.
Ms. Doyle, and then I just, after Ms. Doyle, I'm going to ask for any final questions because I'm looking at the time and we have lots left on our agenda tonight. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, Chair McKenzie. So I have a question. This touches a little bit on what Ms. Smiley mentioned. And it has to do with the Fridays and recognizing how much the teachers need that time. I'm, I'm supportive of them in the format they are. But I've never quite understood and can't totally tell as a parent with three different kids at three different grade levels, how that time is used. You know, one, one of my kids has, uses a lot of that time working hard on Friday, another one a little bit less, another one a little bit less. And so how much is that time being used for small groups? Like, for example, remote students who are maybe getting less of that instructor time that Ms. Smiley just mentioned? And how much is it identifying kids who are struggling passing? Like, I just don't have a real sense of what that looks like and if it's consistent across the district with the Friday time for students?
So what? Okay, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Felder. I was just going to say, and I certainly don't want to speak for, for Mr. Marks. I do know that across the tiers, whether it's K5, 6, 8, or 9, 12, there is consistency within those tiers. You know, if you have a child, you know, much like me, if I have kids that are at multiple tiered levels, they may see somewhat different experiences on Fridays. You know, middle grades may approach it somewhat differently. I know our elementary schools made a decision early on that they were going to meet, have like a morning meeting time. It was going to be uniform across the board so they could at least check in from a social emotional standpoint with students. I know that we have not only, you know, teachers and coaches within each building, but even our district level CNI staff actually meeting with small groups of students on Fridays, just targeted based off of whatever their needs are. But, but this is certainly something that, that we want to make sure that we're kind, now that we're in this process, we want to make sure that we're in a space to, to actually monitor that and, and learn from the successes that we've had. And then try to, you know, implement any additional things that we can for this final kind of nine or nine and a half weeks of the school year. So I, I, I do want to also add that, that there's a lot of pieces during the week. And like you said, if a child is working virtually, when we look at that, that line about teacher discretion, I mean, that is a wonderful opportunity for teachers to check in individually with students. That's why we try to protect that time because it, it really is critical to be able to have something like that built in weekly just to make sure that we're constantly saying on students if they're not necessarily synchronous on a daily basis.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gammon. Dr. Felder, I wanted to, before we vote on Plan A and moving forward with that, I wanted to give you an opportunity to say anything beforehand and also maybe react to Mr. Atherton's request about TAs working and whether you would be supportive of that.
Oh, I would absolutely be supportive of that. So we will start the calculations and get back to you with regards to that. But yes, I think that's a great idea. And I'm sure it would, would be welcomed. Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
The motion to approve superintendent's recommendation for Plan A process and timeline for elementary school students kindergarten to fifth grade and including paying TAs for the teacher working. For elementary.
I have a motion for Mr. Atherton and a second for Ms. Stevens. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser? I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, everyone. Our next item is options for middle and high schools. And I just want to let everyone know that we will have three speakers on this item after the presentation from staff before the board deliberates.
Great. Thank you. And good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, Superintendent Felder, board members, and Orange County School Community. And thank you for your vote just now to support the superintendent's recommendation for Plan A for K through five. I know that the school teams are working very hard to be ready. And we are very excited to welcome back all of our elementary students. And as previously shared, currently it is up to the school districts to determine how secondary grades are to continue this whole year. And in preparation for the district recommendation, we reached out to our families and teachers to get an understanding of their perspectives. And when asked our families, how our families would like their children to complete the remainder of the school year, as of last Friday, we had 2,017 families out of our 4,099 secondary students respond as noted here on this chart. And please note that if you add up the percentages, it doesn't equal 100% because we did have some families that started the survey, but they didn't complete it. So you'll see it slightly off the 100% mark. But as you can see, that 35% of our secondary families are asking for Plan A for the rest of the year. 16 for option two, 46%. They're already in 100, 100% virtual remote and they would like to remain that way. And only 2% of our families indicated that should we transition to Plan A, that, that they would like to then go back, go to the 100% remote learning option for them. So if we go to the next slide, we can see how our teachers responded. And teachers of secondary schools were asked to rate their comfort level regarding instructional regarding instruction under Plan A. And the chart shows the spectrum of responses from our teachers with zero being extremely uncomfortable and then 10 being extremely comfortable. So for this particular inquiry, you could see that there was no real major one over another. And we kind of had a broad spectrum of responses. And if you go to the next question, what you will see is that this one is a little bit more divergent here. When the teachers were asked about their comfort level regarding their own safety under Plan A, the secondary teachers showed the most responses for zero with, with about 35% sharing that they'd be extremely uncomfortable. And as the previous question, they're still across the whole spectrum. The, the responses did range across the spectrum. And so that kind of provided the superintendent some perspectives from our family and teachers. And so I'd like to now pass to our superintendent as Dr. Felder continues with the secondary recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dawson. And so next slide, please. So no, you're right on, right on the right slide. Thank you. So with regards to high school and middle school recommendation for the remainder of this school year, this recommendation comes in collaboration with our, our school-based administrators. And that is to continue in Plan B through Friday, April 30th, providing students with IEPs and 504 plans, the option to transition to Plan A as required by legislation effective April 7th, and then transitioning to Plan A on Monday, May 3rd. And so the rationale for that is outlined on the next slide. And so as been our practice and one of the strategies that have supported our successful transition throughout the year, of which we are receiving national recognition, is to move gradually into our transitions. So while we could shift April 7th, and that was certainly part of our initial thinking, we decided, no, we've moved gradually. All along, we have followed the science and will continue to do just that. Gradually, again, would include bringing back our 504 and our students on 504 plan, AP plans first. And so having, also having elementary schools transition first to Plan A will allow secondary schools lessons learned. We certainly learned lessons from elementary schools who have been in Plan B a little longer. Allowing secondary schools to first focus on bringing our students with IEPs and 504 plans under Plan A will support the gradual transition, as I stated before, while tweaking and identifying necessary changes while preparing all students opting in to Plan A to, to, to transition May 3rd. It is important to keep in mind that the more complex nuances with secondary scheduling, especially in high school, there are more changing of classes and mixing of students. This equates to vacancies, I mean, variances, sorry, variances in class sizes throughout the day, requiring more time to determine which classes will be able to support what level of social distancing. A core class such as ELA or math may have 18 students in the class while a certain elective course may have 15 or 20. So once knowing the impact of class sizes with the return of our students who opting for Plan A, the school teams will be able to review what more needs to be done in preparation for Plan A. Transitioning to Plan A this year will allow first and foremost, an opportunity for all of our students to be back in school and acclimated as they prepare for their end of year assessments, which must be taken in person. It will also provide the school teams an opportunity to experience Plan A and to determine what adjustments need to be made as they prepare for what most likely will be the plan under which we start next school year. As time passes and the scientific community continues to get updated data from ongoing research on the effects of COVID, the sciences are proving that it is safe for students and staff to attend in person with minimal social distancing. We will continue to adhere to, as we stated previously, wearing a mask, washing and sanitizing our hands. And wherever possible, especially at lunch, six feet of social, at least six feet of social distancing. And so after holding discussions and getting feedback, I recommend we allow secondary schools to continue in Plan B through Friday, April 30th, with the understanding that students with IEPs and 504 plans will be given the option to Plan A immediately and that the rest of the schools will transition to Plan A on Monday, May 3rd. Next slide, please. And so this slide, again, just reiterates some of what I just shared. And so in Plan B, we will continue as in Plan A with the days being Monday through Thursday and asynchronous Fridays for the same reasons that were stated for elementary. The hours would remain the same in terms of the way they are currently. And lunch is expected outdoors to the extent possible. We know that there are some challenges at secondary. And at least six feet of distance and indoors definitely at six feet of distance, both in Plan B and in Plan A. Next slide. And so at this time, much like we heard from Mr. Marks, we want to give our secondary principals who worked and collaborated together to share what the instructional day will look like at the secondary level for remote learning. And so to do that, we have with us Dr. Glenn Rolak, Principal of Gravely Hill Middle School, and Mr. Stan Farrington, Principal of Partnership Academy. And they are going to co-present.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about what the instructional day at the secondary level looks like for our 100% remote learners. So as we've said previously this evening, we know that teachers are teaching under a concurrent model, which means they're teaching both the students in the room, who we've sometimes called our roomies. And they're teaching the students who are on Zoom. We sometimes call them our Zoomies. And so as teachers are teaching both groups, we knew that it was really important that all of our students maintain that close class community. So even the students who are in person log into Zoom for their classes all day. So they log into advisory, core classes, as well as electives, so that all students can continue to participate with each other and their teacher. Remote learners do participate in class discussions using the chat box as well as the microphone. And based on what we've seen so far with hybrid learning, we've actually seen more students being willing to use the microphone now that some students are back in the building. And that's been really effective to make sure that kids at home are still engaged with their peers and their teacher. And the remote learners complete independent work. So teachers are providing assignments to all students and expecting that all students would complete those assignments, submitting them via Canvas most of the time.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes, good evening, everyone. And I want to just share a few things about asynchronous Fridays before detailing the slide. Because at first glance, to some people, asynchronous Fridays may appear to represent a loss of instructional time. However, these Fridays are in fact a critical support for both in-person and remote learners. Probably the greatest advantage is that teachers are able to schedule those small group and one-on-one intensive and very targeted instruction sessions. It also affords us the opportunity to reteach content, make up assignments for students, help students make up assignments, as well as offer support to students who may be hesitant to ask questions in front of their peers in the classroom or on the virtual camera. So and lastly, I want to just add really, really quickly that it's also proven invaluable to building relationships between staff members and students during this challenging time. The, the chance to do social emotional learning as well as really focusing on recapturing some of the lost ground for students is, is really important for these asynchronous Fridays. So I want to thank the district for supporting these asynchronous Fridays because I'm telling you, we've seen some students really get some things turned around and take advantage of them. And, and I'll just go ahead and dive into the slide really, really quickly, though. And it says, some students will participate in personalized synchronous learning. And, and that is, is going to be the, the real improvement, I think, when we have the, the technology to use and, and give assignments to students where they can work on their laptops as well as login and, and work directly with the teacher. So they can do it with or without the teacher. It's, it's huge for, for students to be able to build those relationships and focusing on those assignments. I want to talk about the remote learners on that next slide right there, too. Just because let's see here, yeah, did we switch? Yeah. Okay, yeah. So attendance. One of the big things that I, I know we need to make sure we're supporting is how we support an instruction during the regular school day. And, and what we found is that we've done a partnership, I'll say, almost a 3C. We do a check-in, a, a, a check, a connect and a collect type model. And that's an interesting model, but students are checking in on a daily basis, building relationships. That's where they're connecting. And we're gathering information that we can use to help them where their, their polishing points or areas that where they're struggling. So that's, that's one of the things that, that we're trying to do. And it's happening all across the district. Maybe it goes under a different name, but we're really trying to make sure that the students are checking in. And some of the ways they're checking in is Google Forms to check attendance. And, and whenever attendance is taken and students have And and whenever attendance is taken and students have are marked absent, we follow up, whether it's by text message to parents or whether it's a phone call, but we want to make sure we're following up because that time is so valuable. So we're really putting emphasis on making sure students are are showing up, especially on the asynchronous Fridays. Let's do that.
Thank you. So just a little bit about asynchronous Fridays and the ways that secondary administrators are supporting teachers, students and families with making sure that this is a beneficial school day for all students. First, as Mr. Farrington just said, attendance is taken on Fridays. Students receive a Google Form at the secondary level, and they would complete that form so that they are counted present for the day. Students who are not present will be receiving contact from our social worker counselors or administrators, and oftentimes even from just their teacher, who will go ahead and reach out to that student and family if that student has not attended for the day. Students receive daily announcements on Fridays stressing that Friday is a school day. At Gravely, we call Fridays our Focus Fridays, and we give students sort of an outline of what they should be doing that day. We remind students that they need to log into Canvas, that they have assignments from all of their teachers that need to be completed on that day. Those are focus assignments across the secondary level that review content that's been taught either that current week or sometimes we'll go back and pull on some spiral review to help students master standards. We offer a number of small groups, both for academic needs. So in reading and math in each of the various subject areas as well as SEL. So our school counselors and social worker are also offering small groups on Fridays. And the folks who are often in small groups are maintaining participation records. Usually it's just a Google Sheet that shows which students showed up and which students did not, so that we're able to monitor who was actually taking advantage of those opportunities. We also have needs-based and interest-based opportunities that may differ from school to school. So one school has a jazz band, there's math tutoring, there are Friday career chats across various secondary schools. And again, participation records are maintained to help us understand who's taking advantage of these opportunities. So in these are just, I should say, some of the ways that administrators and teachers are working together to support the expectations that all students participate in learning on Fridays.
And I just want to add really quickly, Dr. Rulak, one great opportunity that has been created by these asynchronous Fridays has been a dedicated time for teachers and and office hours, sometimes after the end of the day for the high schoolers, what teachers get together and they can develop cross-curricular learning opportunities to reinforce key concepts between disciplines. And and that is nice to have the teachers kind of know what the other teachers in that department are doing. And of course, PLCs help with that, too. But it's really nice to touch base on that Friday to make sure the plan for the week is solid and and then they can deliver it to the students.
Thank you, Dr. Rolak and Mr. Farrington. And sit tight as there may be questions forthcoming. And so if we could quickly go to the next slide, we we won't spend time on the masking. We've, I think, have made that extra clear that we will continue to double down on masking and the monitoring of of masking. So at this time, I'm turning things back over to Chair McKenzie.
Thank you, Dr. Felder, and thank you, Dr. Rolak and and Mr. Farrington for being here and presenting to us tonight. Mr. Atherton, I will get to you, but we have public comment before the board deliberates. So is there anything pressing you need to say before that or? You go away? Okay, cool. Just want to make sure it wasn't an emergency. Okay, so now is the time for public comments. After each speaker has been recognized and unmuted, they will have three minutes to speak. The board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted or personal abuse against any person. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning any specific employee or student are not permissible during public comments. At this time, our first speaker is Laura Streitfeld. Mr. Jones, will you please unmute her?
Hello?
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, I want to say thank you to to the board and the administration and in particular to the teachers for all of your work throughout this very difficult year. We've seen in our family from the remote perspective just incredible dedication to the students that we've greatly appreciated. And I wanted to request a couple of things tonight. First, I'm coming to you hoping that you all will reconsider your your interest and your vote to do screening testing, which Dr. Benjamin touched on tonight. Last week, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services dedicated $12 billion fast-tracked to U.S. schools to every state for screening testing to give a measure of security to schools as a safer way to reopen. And it's meant for this spring as well as, I believe, for the fall, but I know it's meant to be used immediately because it's fast-tracked to arrive by the first week of April into North Carolina. And North Carolina's allocation is $315 million. So I hope that this board and the administration will get in touch with the ABC Collaborative, but also in touch with the state to figure out how best to use those funds. I would strongly urge you not just, as Dr. Benjamin said, for urban schools, but for our school district, that level of trust is really important to families across the board in order to send students. Just because parents are sending students doesn't mean that there's an innate trust in knowing whether there are cases in our community. And the only way to know is through the screening testing. I respect that there have been tests, studies in Utah and other states, but that doesn't tell us what's in our district right now. And we know that 59% of cases of COVID spread asymptomatic by folks who are asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, and that includes children. So I hope that you all will take this opportunity to figure out how to integrate testing right away into our Plan B that is already in place, as well as Plan A for the elementary. I also want to urge you not to approve Plan A for the high school for several reasons. And I I'm not as familiar with the middle school. I'm a high school parent. But I do believe that opening in Plan A will cause another loss of instructional time, which has already been significant this year. And in every plan, which has changed, almost every month, the proposals and plans have changed in a somewhat urgent way, I would submit that it is not urgent to increase even more the number of students for the very little time that's remaining. And that that will take away from not only instructional time, but also will take away from the safety that may be there and that there may be students and families who are remote, who will need to send in their students, as you say, for testing. The date that's been proposed, May 3rd, is particularly problematic for the high schools because that's the week that AP exams begin. It's also the three days into the IB testing, and that seems to be very much in conflict with the ability of the school to focus on preparing students for their for exams rather than focusing on a new set of logistics that will strain not only the teachers in the school, but also transportation and is likely to cut into, again, instructional time. I think that instructional time has already been cut into. I would say that the asynchronous Fridays would be a huge loss for the high school students whose, you know, educational time has gone from taking block scheduling classes that should be an hour and a half, as, you know, in pre-pandemic times, which have been reduced over the course of the year, and the most recent reduction has brought them down to 55 minutes, I believe. So I would strongly urge you not to approve that. I I hope that this will take the time instead of a new pivot to protect student health, teacher health, and allow planning time this spring and this summer to have a stronger fall. I I am not knowledgeable about what the plans are for the fall, but I would say if there's going to be an all-virtual option, I think it should be something that the school is in charge of, that is run by the school with Orange County instructors, using something like Edmentum, that's a for-profit educational company, would not be preferable to my family, and I'm not sure how others teachers would feel, but you know, other parent families would feel, but I think that would cut students off even more from the school community, more than they would be already from being virtual. I I urge you all to think about how best to spend the rest of the school year. It's a very short rest of the time. I think jumping into Plan A would be unnecessary and extremely disruptive for both students and teachers. And I I would also ask you to consider that remote students, at least at Cedar Ridge High School, are the majority of the students. They're 57%. And I think that it's close to half. I I don't know.
I'll have to ask you to wrap up quickly, please.
Thank you. Yeah. Finally, just thank you very much for all that you're doing. I would ask you to put your energy into testing so that we can have a truly safe reopening gradually. We we know that Plan A is required, but it's not required for the high schools, and I believe it's too disruptive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Christina Clark.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to second Ms. Streitfeld's comments wholeheartedly. And I'm going to be speaking on some of the same points. Sorry if you can hear my cat in the background. Recently, the state and the CDC have changed their guidance for elementary schools. And bringing back younger kids is definitely important and rewarding for both students and staff. I ask that you continue to improve mealtime protocols when everyone is most at risk. Elementary teachers would like to see more attention on creating more outdoor seating and adopting indoor spaces for eating safely when there is inclement weather. Additionally, I'd like to address concerns that a lot of our middle and high school staff have over this proposed switch to Plan A for the upper grades. Simultaneously teaching students in person and virtual is demanding on our time. And in addition to student safety, we are concerned that the instructional time will take yet another hit if we bring more students on campus at once. We have to adjust bus and lunch schedules, and it would not surprise me if classes had to be shortened yet again. Many of us are watching our remote students slip further and further away while we attend to students in our rooms. Creating more of an imbalance could exacerbate the problems we're already seeing. I know at Cedar Ridge, the students that we targeted for interventions are already coming, both A and B weeks. But how many of them will choose to stay home because they are worried about their safety if we switch? We'd like to keep our schedule consistent, especially for these students. Overall, students and staff are worried about yet another adjustment. Our AP IB students are preparing for their exams, and this switch would both stress them out and jeopardize their chances of taking exams if a larger group had to quarantine. Anecdotally, my IB classes would go from about 12 students to over 20. These are basically adults, and they would be packed tightly in my classroom. I'm not sure three feet is even possible. And we are still eating lunch indoors. Staff may be vaccinated, but most students are not, and that is worrisome. Many of us would like to focus on improving what we're doing now and to finish the year out as best we can rather than adapt to a new set of challenges. We are already coming up with creative graduation ceremonies and celebrations for our seniors, and we'd like to dedicate our time to getting those right. I know we also want to get this switch on the elementary level right and focus on that. Please keep in mind that one decision from the state and from where you all sit can mean a whole lot of redirection and changes at the school level. Thank you for your time and careful consideration.
Thank you so much, Ms. Clark. Our next speaker this evening is Gracie Young.
Hi, I'm Gracie Young. I'm a senior at Cedar Ridge High School. And I'm going to be reading a letter that I wrote and that was signed by 32 other seniors at Cedar Ridge High School. The senior class of 2021 has had a bleak year. And going back to Plan A places all of the remaining highlights we are looking forward to at risk. Prom and graduation are some of our last and most important moments of our senior year. Going back to Plan A, where we do not have the space or resources to distance the number of students that will be there, puts those plans back up in the air. Even IB exams, which many of us have prepared to for two years, could be canceled if something were to go wrong in Plan A. This would not only put many students' IB diplomas at risk, but chances of our college credit for these classes, too. Students and teachers are also just beginning to acclimate to the new schedule and changes Plan B put in place. While teachers are doing their best to straddle simultaneous in-person and virtual learning is difficult and time-consuming, they are already attempting to cram material under one-hour time constraints. What would the new schedule look like with even more students to screen, longer bus routes and more things to sanitize? Exam preparation and covering course material has fallen behind enough. And Plan A seems like it would only push this further behind. The full benefits of in-person learning cannot be felt stuck in between virtual and in-person anyways. Pushing the scale to the in-person, more in-person than virtual does not change that. Rather, it deepens the problems felt by a divided classroom. Additionally, there are many students at Cedar Ridge that will no longer be able to come to school for in-person learning if social distancing is taken away, as Plan A will. With a spike in students, the parking lots, hallways and classrooms will be overcrowded beyond what the Health Department has mandated. Even if social distancing is enforced, some teachers are already at their COVID capacity for classroom numbers, and Plan A would double this. There would be also dozens more students taking off their masks to eat at the same time every day, and not all of them would be six feet apart. Many students who would like to keep coming to school will now have to go virtual due to safety concerns. Not all of the teachers and students who want and need to be vaccinated have had the opportunity to. With vaccines just beginning to be available, why go back fully now and risk so many exposures? The students who need to go back full-time for educational reasons are being allowed this exception already. For these reasons, we do not support moving forward with Plan A. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Young. We always appreciate hearing from our students. Now we will take questions from the board. I cannot see everyone. I know Mr. Atherton had a question beforehand. If your hand is up, I'm really sorry. You ready? Well, do you want to have something to say?
Yeah. So the first question I had is against to Dr. Felder and team is, you know, a lot of comments that we've gotten and through the survey and others is coming back in A when you're starting testing and got AP and you know, AP exams did not go well last year for a few people and, you know, that's lost that they can't get back. So I I'm just curious, you know, the timing of the the thought of this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Atherton. And so the timing was planned in collaboration with the secondary principals who are very much aware of the schedules around assessments, et cetera. But the thinking was that the it would give the secondary schools more time in Plan B. And so initially, just to go back a little bit, the the thinking was to around April 7th, the same as it is for elementary. But again, the in collaboration with our school leaders, the thinking was to allow for more time in Plan B, but also opportunity to be in Plan A this year so that we can learn the lessons that we need to learn, tweak plans as need be in preparation for the fall. We've not missed a beat because we've gone gradually. Coming back in the fall, we would come back right into Plan A. There would be no Plan B. That's not the recommendation. And so to spend a few weeks in Plan B, I mean, in Plan A, would give the schools that opportunity. We know that the data and science support Plan A at the secondary level. It is an option that the state is providing us. There is data to support that. And so again, it would provide more time in Plan B as well as giving us an opportunity to be in Plan A and learn the lessons, tweak the plans, much like we did in Plan B, right? And so we had an opportunity to bring our staff back and to take the plans that look so great on paper and operationalize those plans, make adjustments to those plans. And I do believe that that has contributed greatly to the success that we're having in Plan B. Well, we need to get ready for Plan A as well. And spending just a few weeks in in Plan A would help us to do that. The principals did not. The principals did not express, you've got two secondary principals still on this call, and so I did not express any concerns about the May 3 date and assessments.
All right, I have one other question. How many of our classes would be less than six foot? You know, of course, they would be masking and all, but do we know how many of our classes would actually be pushed into the three-foot or less than six-foot range?
Yes, and so we do have that information and can share that with you. I do know that per what principals have shared with us, there are classrooms that would certainly could still be at six feet based on the number of kids they know want to be in Plan A and the number of students that they have now. I'm not sure if we can, if any of those principals are available to speak to that now. But based on their data, some classrooms would be at three feet. Some classrooms, they said that they may be able to shift to a larger space. Some classrooms could even still remain at six feet. And so there, you know, would be a variety depending on the number of students who wanted to come back. But we can certainly provide the board with that information.
And if I may add to that, if I may add to that, Dr. Felder and Mr. Atherton, because it was something that secondary principals did discuss. And this is part of why the gradual return to Plan A, because, you know, these are some of the details that they needed to work out. As we know, our students on IEPs and 504 plans, they are able to come back in Plan A now. And so that was their first gradual step into saying, well, what will our numbers look like having those students come in under Plan A? And what adjustments would they have to make? And what impact does that have on the social distancing? And then, you know, working in, well, if it's the other students that came in, what will that look like? And it's that additional time that would allow them to determine the social distancing in each class. Because as Dr. Felder previously shared, that it's, you know, it's not like elementary where they have a cohort of students that stay together pretty much all day, and we can determine the social distancing in that way. As we know, with the changing of classes, there will be some class that may have 26 students in a class, and then they're going to have to find alternative ways to, you know, conduct those classes in a way that still will allow, you know, as much social distancing as possible. And that may mean, you know, different creative ways to do that. While another class, you know, because of the type of class, may only have 10 students in it. And then we can absolutely say, yes, you know, they would absolutely be able to have six feet of social distancing. So that's part of the discussion that the secondary principals had with us and why they were saying, you know what, let's keep it gradual and do the Plan B a little bit longer. Let us have the time to work out these details. And then the other piece of it, too, is some of our students, as we know, have not been in school all year. And for them to have to come back in at the end of the year to take the assessments that are required, you know, that wouldn't be gradual for them either. And so even though it may just be a few weeks for them to come in, just get acclimated, to just be familiar with the different, you know, expectations around safety and health guidelines in school. And just again, to just say, like, get acclimated to being in class before they have to take the end-of-year exams or APs or, you know, the different, the assessments that they have taken. I know that AP also, you know, is looking at different options and things, but there are some exams that students will have to come in and take in person. And this will allow them also that gradual shift as well.
I thank you, Dr. Deuce. And I would like to invite Dr. Ramirez, principal of Cedar Ridge High School. He has his space data handy and would like to present that. So, Mr. Jones, could you please elevate Dr. Ramirez to panelist status?
So, Dr. Felder, one additional question when he provides that is how will the lunch arrangements be handled with the six-foot and assuming rain, right? Of course, how they would manage that? So if he has, Dr. Ramirez has that available, too, that would be great, just to understand that dynamic.
Sure. Dr. Ramirez, when you are...
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, good evening. Good evening, everyone, board members, Dr. Felder and team and community. I'm Carlos Ramirez, principal at Cedar Ridge. And we have been digging in deep a lot of the questions that were presented tonight. And one of them is about space. So as you saw from the surveys, a lot of our students decided to stay home or will stay home at Cedar Ridge. We roughly have around 440 students, more or less, that are back and are going to stay with us most likely. So that's about 40% of our students. I talked to Mr. Hunt earlier. He has about the same number. So when we look at our classrooms, we each have, when we combine Cohort A and Cohort B together, we're looking about a third of our classrooms would not meet the six-foot threshold or socially distanced. We, as we look at the classes, you know, classrooms are different sizes. We predict that about 20%, about 20% of the classrooms would not be able to do the three-foot distancing piece. Of course, this number only pertains to the students that we have now in Cohort A, Cohort B. That number may go up if students decide to come back, or it may go down. But that's roughly where we are, and we won't know until we get a confirmation from the students and their families what option they're going to choose. So that's what I wanted to share with you all. Thank you for the support and everything that y'all are doing to make distance education work for all of our students. And there was a question about, I'm sorry, I think I missed a question about the cafeteria or lunches?
Yes. For those 20%, how would you manage those lunches where they need to be six foot apart? And in those classrooms, they would not be. And I assume it's raining, and you can't go outside.
Oh, well, if we were trying to go outside, and I can only speak for Cedar Ridge in terms of where we would eat. If we cannot eat outside because of inclement weather, we can eat in our cafeteria or we can eat in the classrooms. It's better, it's been working for us now. We're eating in the classrooms because we're able to maintain a six-foot distance, and we're able to carefully monitor our students to ensure that they're following all the safety protocols. So that's where we are now at this point. You know, with the addition of J-Wing, we added quite a bit of square footage, so that allows us even more space across campus. When you have roughly 440 students, we believe we'll be able to manage all of our students with the same amount of attention we have now.
Thank you.
Ms. Doyle, then Ms. Miley.
Thank you. Dr. Ramirez and any other administrators who are on. I'm curious, kind of per the question that Mr. Atherton raised, if there are certain classrooms where there isn't adequate six feet of distance to eat lunch in those classrooms. And I do know that there are a lot of high school classrooms that aren't, like you're mentioning, you know, that have single digits of students. And so combining cohorts won't be a stress. But for the ones that are, is there additional support? And is this what y'all are trying to work out through the month of April? Is there additional support needed from the board for, you know, extra lunchtime monitors? Or are there other accommodations to make this smooth to adapt for the larger classrooms of students?
I don't know if my colleagues want to jump in on this, but I could share that. We hope through Plan A, we'll be able to adjust, reevaluate, and tweak our, well, all of our protocols when we have Plan A students back. So we're looking forward, just as we did with the orientations, that allowed us a great opportunity to look at our protocols and make adjustments in real time. At this point, we have support. We believe we have enough support to monitor. Though it does require teachers to monitor during lunchtime. So that's been where the stretch is. Additional staffing may help, but it might be kind of interesting to have additional staff just for lunch. But right now, we believe that we have the resources to handle 40% of our students back in a Plan A. But like I said, that's, you know, it's all about individual buildings and the space that they have and the staff that they have. So I can't answer for the other school.
I can concur with what Dr. Ramirez was sharing in terms of having, I do believe at Gradley, anyway, the space in terms of using any unused classrooms and spaces. We would, though, have to ask our teachers who are on planning to supervise some students in lunch if it's an inclement weather day and we have to eat inside. So that we would still have, we've done seven feet of distancing at lunchtime. So we would have to ask both teachers on planning as well as instructional support staff, so school counselors, school social worker, some of those folks to monitor groups during lunch if we were in Plan A.
And I could also add, if necessary, Central Office stands ready to be of support. And so much like Central Office is in schools helping to monitor masking, we can also be of support with lunches and in any other way that our schools need our support in making a transition.
Ms. Miley?
I just wanted to understand one of these pieces. Dr. Ramirez, did you say 20% of the rooms wouldn't be able to do the three feet of distance?
No, no, I meant the six foot.
Six foot, okay, okay, great, great, great.
Yeah, I can share a screen with you real quick to show the breakdown so you can see as of last Friday what our numbers would look like and which classes would be impacted with not meeting the six-foot rule.
And we do understand that in Plan A, the six-foot rule is not necessary in classrooms. It's three feet.
Right.
It's six feet for meals, but thank you.
Yeah, it's just, it's helpful to understand that, like, how many classes might actually then need to move out of there, and you would need to find a different space for them. So that was helpful.
But it's just not six for meals. It's also, I was reading something that was put out with the CDC. It's for choral rooms, you know, when they're singing. If you have something, they have to be at six feet as well.
Can I, can I just, Ms. Stevens' remark reminded me of this. So in terms of the groups that would need to go to other places, my understanding is that a lot of those places are being used right now, right? So that the auditorium's being used for music and the cafeteria is being used for supervised learning labs to cover teachers who are quarantining. Do we know yet whether there are enough other spaces and buildings or whether we'd have to get tents for outdoors or something else in order to find enough space?
I will allow our principals to speak to that. But I know that they are being very creative. And I think Dr. Ramirez mentioned some of the spaces that can be used to ensure that students are at least six feet apart indoors. So we're looking at auditoriums, gymnasiums, cafeterias. There are also other large spaces such as foyers that students have used previously. Dr. Ramirez and Dr. Rolak, I don't know if you have other spaces to add, but feel free to.
The only thing I would add to that, Dr. Felder, is that we also have a few classrooms at Gradley that are not currently being used. And so we were planning to also have students in some of our unused classrooms in addition to all the large spaces that you just mentioned.
Thank you, Dr. Rolak.
Ms. Hauser?
So I have a couple of questions. First, is by April 7th, how many of our teachers will have been vaccinated? They roughly 1%.
So thank you for that question, Ms. Hauser. We don't know the exact number because we're not allowed to ask. What we do know, and what you'll hear in the Plan B update, we can tell you how many staff have signed up using the options that we've provided through our partnering with a number of entities in support of ensuring staff who want to be vaccinated can. But we also know that a number of staff have been resourceful, as we encourage them to be, and not miss the opportunity if it comes their way. I can tell you that we are no longer having staff sign up. So we are, we can only make an assumption that that means that they have been vaccinated, those who wanted to be, and that is over 700 per the signup sheets that we have. And so to the extent that the vaccination event on Friday through the Hillsborough Pharmacy, who have been such great partners for us, has been canceled because we don't have anyone signing up, which is a good problem to have. And so, but we don't know the exact number because we're not allowed to ask.
But I guess I'm thinking about, I was surprised at the safety number because I would think by the time we switch to Plan A, that most of our teachers would be vaccinated. So I don't know.
I would like to think so, given, again, where we are with the events and opportunities that we've provided and the number who have asked to come off because they've already received the vaccine. So they no longer need the options that we are providing.
Right, so, and just, I mean, I think it's pretty well-known that I really want the kids back in school. And every student I know that's in Plan B wants to be in Plan A. Where I'm struggling is the teachers, not so much. You know, the teachers are tired, and there seems to be a lot unknown about the variations in their schedules and class sizes and things like that. And that's creating some amount of hesitance. To me, May 3rd seems very late to be doing this. And I was just curious if it would be possible for us to move this to April 7th with each school responsible for their own schedule to return so that they can then adapt their schedule to their unique student population, their needs, their class sizes, and how they balance it. So, and my goal would be, if we're going to create this additional disruption, to do it in a way that we get more benefit out of it.
Right, I appreciate your comment, Ms. Hauser. And I will certainly let the principals chime in. But as I mentioned at the top of this, we did not make this decision in a vacuum. And so initially, we were looking at April 7th, and it was the principals that said they need time for all the reasons that I mentioned. And so I don't know of Mr. Farrington, Dr. Rolak, or Dr. Ramirez, if you want to chime in here. But I would not recommend April 7th. I do think giving the schools more time in B and to plan for A, I do think, while certainly not, none of this has been ideal. Not one single solitary piece of this operating schools in a pandemic has been ideal. But I do support the recommendation of at least May, again, giving the schools an opportunity to, A, come up with a viable plan, to work the plan, to tweak the plan, so we don't miss a beat in the fall. That is critically important. But, Dr. Rolak, Dr. Ramirez, and Mr. Farrington, anything you'd like to add?
I would just add that another reason we decided to hold off until May 3rd was the Transportation Department had some real concerns about getting the routes prepared. There's a lot involved in getting those routes ready to go when you're including all of the students at the same time. I know they were really concerned about getting it turned around for the elementary schools. That was a big task. And the numbers are going to be just as large, if not larger, for the secondary. And the numbers are going to be just as large, if not larger, for the secondary. And they, they really wanted time. So that was a big issue for us.
Thank you, Mr. Farrington. I forgot that and that you're absolutely correct. And we only have one TENS coordinator. District the size typically has two. We have one and she is working quite feverishly. And we appreciate her efforts. But that is another factor is just getting the transportation right.
Board members, can I have a motion to extend till ten o'clock, please?
I'm moved.
Second? I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Smiley. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Okay. We have an extra half hour and we will go back to our discussion about middle school options. Are there other comments, concerns before we take a vote?
Can I just clarify my question a little bit? And I, okay, I really respect that this all has been thought through. And I guess I was asking, if a school wants, has some opportunity to move some groups up, can they take that if they have? So I'm not asking the schools to be open. I'm sorry to switch to pivot on April seventh. I'm asking them to have a plan where they do the pivot from April seventh to May third, depending on their needs. It can be completely disruptive. You would say no. I just wanted to make sure that that question was understood.
Can I just share something, a thought about that?
Sure.
Which is, you know, all the, this, any of the students with IEPs and 504s will start coming back on April seventh. And the schools are already bringing back all the students that they've identified as in need of that extra time. So those, those groups are already in there or about to do that on April seventh.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. That's correct.
There are board members? Ms. Doyle?
Really just the outline concern I have, the lingering concern has to do with the testing. And I am curious about it not seeming disruptive for students and teachers, for kids to come back the week. And I'm unclear about the specific date specifically for the IB program. But would it even be a benefit to come back the week of April twenty-sixth? And I don't want to get in the weeds of someone else's business. There might be a perfectly logical reason why it's May third and not May twenty-sixth. But is there just not a concern that that would be hard? Or that there aren't that many of those students? Or that those students can already come back a week early if that would be helpful? Or I'm just, would like a little clarity on that point.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. I would say it's probably all of that. And I would ask Dr. Ramirez as a high school principal if he can speak to that.
Yeah.
Here he is.
Hi. Sorry, I was chewing on popcorn and I did not hear your fearful question. Can you repeat, please?
I'm just curious that it, have you not gotten feedback from teachers, perhaps IB teachers, that having kids come back the week of May third with IB testing starting? Does that not seem stressful to the teachers or the teachers imagine it being stressful for their students? Or would that be the type of example of an exception that could be made? That that cohort of students could be back in Plan A the week before? So I was just curious why the week of May third ended up getting picked?
Now, we considered a couple of start dates and May third seemed the most logical because of testing. We're going to have students in the building anyway. And that's just not, you know, a variety of tests that we're given to outside of the IB exam. So as far as the teacher concern, I have not asked necessarily how they, how they feel about, about this. Though some that I have, you know, some are okay with kids coming back and starting up and others are very concerned. So I wouldn't have an exact number for you for that. But anytime we bring more kids in, just the natural response from many would be concerned until we get our systems in and get used to, get used to the new normal.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Ms. Moore?
Thank you. I guess I really have more comments than a question. So data shows that students need structure and our secondary teachers need to be in position to teach content and provide quality bell-to-bell instruction. I'm very concerned about how transitioning to Plan A will impact our secondary students and teachers. The students need consistency for learning and our teachers need consistent, consistency, I'm sorry, to provide effective planning and teaching. Also, how will Plan A affect transportation staff and nutrition staff with all students going into Plan A at the same time? Depending if and when the district went with Plan A for secondary, nutrition staff may need additional time to order additional supplies or food. Transportation for secondary, how will it affect the transportation route? Their routes will have to be generated. So parents and students will also need to know those bus route schedules ahead of time to, you know, to make plans for their family. And, you know, maybe some students need someone to be with them at the, at their bus stops or whatever. So I think those are some things to take into consideration. Thank you.
If I may, Ms. Moore, and so the, again, that's part of the reason why secondary wouldn't begin on April seventh. It will allow time for all of the things you mentioned. It will allow time for transportation to get the routes together. They are confident that they can. Transportation was very much a part. Mr. Albert, who's still part of this meeting, can speak to that. Very much a part of the decision-making process. We would have not made these decisions or picked that date if it were not in consultation with transportation or with Sarah Pitts, who is our new director for Child Nutrition Services. And so we're very confident with regards to meals and transportation for secondary by that May start date. Thank you.
Ms. Stevens? Oh, you're on mute.
Got it. All right. Thanks. Thanks a lot. So, you know, the CDC issued this new guidance and this sparks renewed debate on classroom safety. And that's my concern. You know, the new guidance calls for students maintaining at least six feet in your cafeterias and other areas where masks cannot be worn, such as when they're talking or singing or in a choir room or whatever. And we all have said how much we want to follow the science and trust CDC. And I certainly trust the CDC to offer sound advice. But at the same time, we've come too far to let our guard down. And I'm just concerned about the safety and the inability to distance at, at lunchtimes or in the choir room or when they're in the hallways. Thanks.
I think, Ms. Stevens, if I could just comment in response to your comment, we, we're not going to let our guard down. If we find through the planning that will take place between now and May, May third, if we find that we cannot find ways to distance our children by six feet when the mask comes off, and that should only be one time. And that's during meals. That's it. They've not come off any other time in Plan B and will not come off at any other time in Plan A. If we find that we can't do it, we'll come back and say, hey, we can't make it work. And so this gives us the time to plan for that. Again, we've not missed a beat. We've been gradual and steady. And we've been well-planned and very detailed in our plans. And the secondary schools are asking for the time to do that. And that would be the month of April. And again, if we find that it's not possible, we still have to survey families to see how, exactly how many. We have a broad survey, but to just really pinpoint our numbers now. But if we find through our planning that we're not going to be able to socially distance at six feet during mealtime, we, we would never jeopardize our students. And so just wanted to, to share that.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. So I guess I will share sort of where I'm at with everything. I know that a lot of thought has been put into this. I do not take, not supporting recommendations from the superintendent lightly. I, I just can't support Planning A at the secondary level right now. I feel like I'm eager and excited to support it for the next academic year. I think, given all of the considerations and the testing time period and pivoting once again and burnout of our staff and knowing that our students need consistency and concern with lunchtime. And, you know, we've already been told that it's problematic to try to get high schoolers in this plan outside. I just, to eat lunch, I just am going to feel better about being in Plan A when everyone who wants to be vaccinated is fully vaccinated, when some of our students are vaccinated in the summertime. I'm excited and glad that we're in Plan B and eager to continue with that. And I will happily support planning for Plan A for next academic year, but that's where I'm at. Other board members? Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, Dr. Felder and her team down through District seven and every principal and teacher and assistant principal and staff has done an extraordinary job with making our kids safe and transitioning onto B. And now we're about to send elementary schools to A. Our teachers will be vaccinated. I really believe that this transition to A could be done safely. But to me, May third is just too late to do, to take on all the disruption and impact of another pivot for just another, to just give the kids another three weeks in a classroom. They will be back, if I'm understanding this correctly, they're going to have to come back for end-of-grade testing. There may be some accommodations that the district might have to make. I don't know who could use, but, you know. So I'm not in favor of the pivot. I am in favor of giving the district flexibility to take, make some accommodations that it needs to make to, to take care of its business through the rest of this very challenging school year.
Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, I, I mean, the big question for me at this point, I am in a place where I think the science is pretty good in terms of the three-feet safety, as long as you're having at least six feet. And I think my question is really around, are the benefits worth the cost? Because I do believe that you need that much time on planning. And I don't, when I, I want every person in our buildings to maximize our instructional time for the entire rest of this year. I want our entire focus there. I am really glad that students with IEPs and 504s are coming back. I'm so glad that schools have been really trying to pull in higher-needs students for both cohorts. And I hope we continue and expand that. But when I think about administrators spending time in April focused on figuring out these logistics versus learning and asking our staff to sort of pivot again, I think that the loss of instructional time, it's going to take longer for students to pass in the hall. I think that bits of it might get eaten away there. And I do, I understand the desire to like, try it out a bit this spring before the fall. I also think that our administrators being able to have like, free space to, to plan when they're not also finishing up the school year is a good thing. And that maybe things like orientations and things like that at the beginning of next year could achieve something similar. So to me, I'm just landing in a place where the benefits, I don't believe, outweigh the costs.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I just think the timing is not good. I have similar feelings to the other board members that trying to make this change while doing all the planning at the same time, we're asking about summer school, Saturdays, you know, extended learning, trying to come up with new ideas at the same time. And, you know, just not having the consistency. It just, May just seems like a bad time to do it to me, especially right there at the end. I think we can get some, some experience in summer school to do this. But I just think timing at the end of school when students are, you know, especially our seniors as they're planning to get out and, you know, do all these things. I just think it's, I think it's too much for everyone.
So with that, unless there are any other board members that have anything they specifically want to say right now, Ms. Doyle?
So I think I'm in the minority of hoping we can transition to Plan A. But I was wondering if people who have a variety of concerns about it would feel more comfortable with transitioning middle school only and not high school? Because middle school, for example, is a testing situation that's, people expressed stress regarding. And it also doesn't appear to have had the same level of difficulty with eating lunch outdoors.
I guess I'll respond to Ms. Doyle. For me personally, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with all of our secondary schools staying in Plan B until next school year. But certainly I'll open the floor to other board members. Well, oh, Ms. Hauser?
No, I'll just say I've heard the same resistance in the middle schools that I have in the high schools about the stress, the impact, you know, they're, they're in blended classes now and the loss of support for the virtual kids. So I've heard the, you know, it's pretty universal. And I think part of what I'm hearing is a very, very tired staff, you know, that's ready to wrap it up.
Any other discussion or is there a motion? Is there, I mean, I think what I'm hearing is that there is more interest in staying in Plan B for our secondary schools for the remainder of this academic year. So is there a motion for that?
If we need a motion for it, I'll move it to remain in IB at secondary.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, our secondary schools will remain in Plan B for the remainder of this academic year. The next item on our agenda is,
I'm sorry, can I just jump in? I know the staff wanted to make sure this was clear that, and I think it's clear to the board that that means except for students with IEPs and 504s.
Yes, of course. We absolutely intend to follow state law.
Okay.
Ms. Hauser?
It also means that the district has continued discretion with, you know, to bring kids back that need to be back. So that they can continue to do, make the accommodations that they need to make. Right?
As long as they're maintaining six feet of distance, I think that that's how we've been operating. Because that's officially the definition of Plan B, that everyone else is understanding.
Agreed.
Okay. Is that the clarity we need, Ms. Stevens? Are we ready to move on? Awesome. Okay, so our next item is the proposed plan for reopening all schools for the 2021-22 academic school year.
That would be correct. Chair McKenzie, give me one second. Okay, there we go. All right, so projected on this slide again is the proposed reopening of schools for next school year. Again, we don't have a crystal ball, tea leaves, none of those things. So we don't know what the future holds. But should we at least remain in the state that we're in, hopefully they'll be even more improved. The recommendations are as noted on this slide overall with Plan A for all schools. So that's the minimal social distancing, three feet in classrooms, six feet at lunchtime. So we're going to have to figure that out one way or the other. But that's the recommendation for next school year. Again, it would be Monday through Friday. So the asynchronous Fridays would no longer continue for next school year. And we would go back to more traditional pre-COVID bell times. Do know that there will be some slight adjustments and we'll bring that to the board soon. With regards to those bell times, we know that pre-COVID, there were concerns about the bell times that needed to be addressed and they are in the process of being addressed. As I mentioned previously, next year, we are also recommending a standalone virtual academy for 100% remote learners that would remove the need for hybrid or concurrent teaching. And we would continue the before and after care at the elementary level and after school care at the middle school level. We would not have supervised learning labs next year. So that's the proposed reopening. Again, would like to note that all of this is subject to change. We don't know what the future holds, but this would at least give us a placeholder to begin planning. Because if we're going to be ready, the one thing we know is that we need plans and we need to get those plans in place. So with that, we'll open it up for questions, comments, discussion.
Very good. I do just want to bring everyone's attention to the fact we have 10 more minutes. So just calling that up, Ms. Smiley and Mr. Atherton?
Yes, very quickly, I'm very excited to go in this direction. I wanted to get clarification on the, when we say minimal social distancing, is our sort of minimum as a district three feet? Is as a minimum?
Yeah, so it's three, as is what elementary school students would be experiencing per the guidance from CDC. It's three feet in classrooms, six feet at lunchtime, a mealtime. There's breakfast or lunch.
I just, and I'm hoping there will be more research coming out until the summer, I think about like other distances and whether the three feet is necessary at what ages. And I'm glad that that's our limit right now. I am, I'm sure that the team is going to do the math on when 95% of our students come back. Is that actually physically possible in these buildings? And just wanted to name that as a concern. And yeah, look forward to being able to be clear with the community that this is the intent for next year.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes, on the virtual academy, I know we had challenges at the high school level, especially when certain classes, you know, were only offered from, you know, in-person, for example, our AP courses and some of the unique courses. Have y'all talked about how that would be addressed to do the virtual academy? Or are there going to be limitations on it to ensure they can all be virtual? For high school?
So I can tell you, Mr. Atherton, we are still working out the details of virtual academy. Dr. Gammon or Dr. Dawson are welcome to chime in. But what we do know is that we do not want to continue next year with concurrent hybrid teaching for all the reasons that, you know, it's the most challenging, most taxing strategy. Our teachers have done a phenomenal job with it. But that's not something that we can support for next school year. So we're talking about its own school, own school number, own principal, et cetera. And as it will likely, we will likely need to offer that 100% virtual option next year. So Dr. Dawson and Dr. Gammon, did you have anything else to add?
I concur, Dr. Felder, that with the virtual school, not everything will be offered the same as in the other schools to avoid exactly that, this topic that we're talking about, Mr. Atherton. But the families will be very clear, you know, should they be choosing to enroll in the virtual academy, you know, what programs will be made available? And if that's not what they want, then that may not be the best option for them. But we can't offer everything. And so, you know, we will offer what we can virtually, avoiding that concurrent teaching model.
Okay, and would the virtual academy also include classes, for example, that would be at Durham Tech? Or, you know, that would be remote, obviously, as well?
So as in all of our schools that qualify, for students that qualify for our college and career promise, that would still be an option? Yes.
And the last question I had was, on the virtual academy, is there a self-study option? I know that we offer that this year, but is that one of the things that will not be offered? Or will there still be the virtual with teacher and self-study?
So what I'm going to ask for, Mr. Atherton, is an opportunity to share further details as we work them out when we return with more of the plans worked out for you.
That's fair, that's fair.
Thank you.
I just want to elevate my request one more time that next year's virtual academy, since we're still in the midst of a pandemic, will allow our students at Hillsborough Elementary to maintain their place at that school, even if they choose virtual for next academic year?
So that is certainly something we are looking into, Mrs. McKenzie, but not only for Hillsborough Elementary School, but the other schools that are choice schools.
Very good. Thank you. Other board members, or do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommended plan for next year?
No.
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second, who was the second? Ms. Hauser, second from Ms. Hauser. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
You have approved the recommendation for reopening all schools next year under Plan A. Dr. Felder, at this time, I'm going to ask you if you think that we should move forward with Plan B updates? Or if that's something that the board can just receive in this report form? And since the public has access to this as well?
Yes, I'm, I think you can receive it in report form. That would work for us, given where we are in terms of time.
Okay, does the board have any specific question or request before we move to our final item? Seeing anything? Okay, so our last item, I'm sorry?
No, I was just saying, okay.
Okay, great, sorry. I looked down and I didn't, I didn't see what was said. Our final agenda item tonight is a policy proposal for 2420?
I'm sorry, Mr. McKenzie, I just, so you just, all that information on the LEAs, all that information on staffing and is all, that's all the plans, that's all in the Plan B update. There's a lot of really important information in there. So I'm happy if you want to defer, but I really like that report. You know, and I'd like to talk about it.
Okay.
So it's okay if you want to do it at the later meeting, but I think we have to talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Felder?
Yes, so am I hearing a request to proceed weekend?
Proceed with policy 2420 and we'll, we'll come back, we'll circle back to figure out when we can talk about Plan B updates. We just have three minutes left, so we just have to move forward.
Policy 2420?
Do we need a motion to extend by how long, five minutes, 10 minutes?
This should be really quick, so I'm really hoping we can move through it.
All right, all right, let's go.
So I'm happy to sort of explain this one. And I had Ms. Doyle on there as well as the leader of the Community Engagement Committee. Is that all right if I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is a proposal that came out of the Community Engagement Committee and they just asked me to write it up. So it's not coming from me and it can be modified in whatever way you would like. But it was just a proposal of adding an additional way for people to do public comment in a written format as opposed, if they cannot come to the board meeting or the virtual board meeting. And the idea was that there would be an email address where people could send public comments. And that those comments would not be read during the meeting, but would be posted on the website later so that, you know, so that they would be public, so that the rest of the public could read them. One, and so you can obviously read the summary here. Ms. Doyle made the good point that we ought to add people who send in letters and as well as emails. And so we should, can certainly add that and have it just be written public comment instead of email public comment. And so the idea is people can send in their comments whenever. And then they will be shared with the board and then made publicly available after someone has had a chance to review them to take out profanity, confidential information, anything like that. So that is the proposal and I'll let the Community Engagement Committee speak to it.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Ms. Doyle, do you want to say anything before the board opens up discussion or did that cover it well enough?
That covered everything well enough, as long as staff is good with the three-hour timeframe and not needing any more than that. That was just a tentative amount of time. But basically by the day of the board meeting, that the copy would be received so that someone could process and distribute them.
As a suggestion, if, since I know we're trying to move kind of quickly to finish up, we could approve it with the understanding that a staff needs to extend that window of time. Then we would be okay with that, if the board pleases.
And one other thing is I don't think this needs to be in board policy. And that's, you know, I put, at least right now, and that's why I put like, maybe we'll try it during virtual meetings. I know it initially came up in other districts because of virtual meetings. And then when you go back to in-person meetings, you can decide what you want to do with it. So it doesn't need to be in policy, but just a proposal that you are going to start doing.
Cool. Ms. Hauser and then Ms. Smiley?
No, I have to tell you, I completely misinterpreted what this policy was. But let me probably go, I'll come back.
Ms. Smiley? My only request is that we keep track of the amount of time it takes staff to go through this and remove all the confidential information and stuff. That was, when we've discussed something similar as a board in the past, that was the concern, was the amount of staff time it would take.
I completely agree with that. Ms. Hauser?
Okay, so as I read this, any email that comes to the board that the sender had the option to treat it as public comment so that it could go on our list serve? Right? Any agenda, anything they want to say.
Yeah, I think the idea was that there would be a separate email address, like publiccomments@OCS. So it wouldn't be people sending emails to you.
Yes, I mean, to the board, but right now we've got to get to the board, but some of it really does, I think it belongs on public comment. So I love this. Thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes, to clarify, so I think if we have on our district website, you know, sign up here for public comment for Monday's meeting. If you would rather send your written comment, so it wouldn't be all emails coming to the board. It would be, they would be late, you know, the person would select that this was their public comment method.
Yes, and it would be a distinct email address like Eva had said also. Okay, well, let's give it a whirl then. Do I have a motion to give that, give it a try?
So moved. Second?
The motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
Just one clarity, the board, the separate email, I assume the board still will receive it. Meaning it'll get emailed to us and unabridged, unremoved information, even though it's a separate email. So we would get it no matter what, versus it just goes to the public and we would see it there. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, the idea was that it would be provided to you in a batch, not that you would get them in real time. I suppose I don't really have a strong opinion about it, except it may become confusing for board members as far as which ones are, I don't love the idea of them just automatically forwarding to your email because, and being mingled in with your other emails.
I agree, I think they should be sent to us in a batch.
Yeah, my request is we do not get them redacted, right? I mean, as board members, we should get what it really says. So that's, that's my only request. Is that everybody's understanding, everybody?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Dr. Felder, do you have anything before we adjourn?
Yeah, I just need a clarity on the redacting. I'm not sure what staff's responsibilities are then, if they're not redacting, but I can get that information later. I don't need it tonight. I just want clarity on what.
I think that the public, when it's posted on the website, it would be redacted if there was personal or personnel information, but that the board would receive the unredacted versions of the emails.
Thank you for that clarity.
Okay, well then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second? I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Ms. Hauser. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yep.
We're adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody.